Okay, well, let's call the meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have any additions to the agenda?
Yes. We have a resignation. And then, let's put the resignation right under teacher retirement, under new business. And then the sixth month CD renewal. And...
Ah, where does that fall in? Is that up in financial reports? Or after that?
Right after that, yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept the agenda. Did the items that I had requested to add to the agenda get in there?
Yes. Uh, new business.
D. Okay. Just ready. Thank you.
Okay, uh, motion to approve agenda.
Second.
Seconded, any discussion? Any else? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same side? Motion carried. Okay. Go through the consent agenda. We'll try and move along a little quicker tonight because we've got a lot of teacher reports and stuff to get to. So, if I'm going too fast, just say, hold on, wait a minute. Slow down. But, so we got our minutes from last board meeting. And were there any corrections or additions? I did notice in there that the line about superintendent evaluations due in December. And I talked to Amber about that a little bit, and she said, well, that's what you guys said at the meeting.
Yep.
But they're actually due in November. Right?
Yes.
In November 15th.
Yeah, teachers are due December 15th, and superintendent is November 15th.
But this is what was said at the meeting, so that's how the minutes are. Just to clarify that, I guess. Do they have anybody else? Anyone have any other items on minutes? If not, we'll roll right into November board bills.
I guess a question on that one. Um, the Vital Network, the $35,800. Is that a one-time expense for that then, or what?
That is, uh, that's the teacher retention and recruitment thing that we talked about last time. And it's a full grant. So, we get that back. We'll get reimbursed for that through DPI. And that's just a one-time, one-time payment for us, yeah.
Has that started for us then yet?
We had our first meeting, oh, was it two Fridays ago? During PD. Yeah, last PD. And then the teachers and staff completed a survey. And then that goes to Vital Network, and then they'll analyze the survey and then come back to us with suggestions on what we can try to do to, to help.
And that was a state-funded program then?
Uh, it's through a grant that goes through DPI. I'm not sure where the original grant came from, if it was state or federal.
Thanks.
How long does that program last?
All year.
Just one year?
Yep.
And over a few years and just worked out.
There's a YouTube video out there, I could share on it. Interesting.
I looked up the website. Just kind of familiar with it. Anything else on board bills? Anything else that needs to be?
I guess I'm curious on the bus loans. Is it something that, just kind of be curious what our rate is on that? Is it something where we should be? How are we better off spending our money? Are we better off with cash in the bank and savings and having a loan? Or those loans, something that there is early payment option? It's not something maybe that we have to answer today, but I think it'd be, take a look at those bus loans and assess them a little more.
I think we asked that once before, it's because the rates are fairly low.
Are they?
Yeah, because I was thinking a while ago, I don't think it was a recent thing.
Yeah.
Where rates were fairly reasonable at the time, if I remember correctly.
Would, uh, would the balance on those be in, under balance sheet, or would we see that in our financials?
You wouldn't see that anywhere on the balance. I would just have to pull the schedule. I know the smaller, like the 746 one, that one will be paid off, I believe, in June or July. So, there's just a few more months on that. I think the other one, maybe a couple more years on it. That's for big blue.
And I'm pretty sure we were like sub-five or percent on it.
Yeah, I'm not 100%, but I think it's fairly low.
Yeah.
Thought we had that discussion before we renewed the CD last time, the CD was making more than.
Right.
It was.
Yeah.
And we were paying, so that's why we renewed the CD last time.
Any other questions? For bills? Okay, if not, let's roll on the balance sheet. Any questions, concerns, comments on balance sheet? That looks pretty normal. Uh, we'll go on to revenue. Looks like everyone is holding off on paying their property tax until they sell their results in measure four. No one's paying that early. We're at 37.8% of revenue right now. What percent of the year are we through?
About a third.
A third?
Coming in July, we're four months in.
Okay. If no questions, we'll roll on to expenditures. And I know as comparing these two reports, our revenues versus expenditures were... Slightly positive for our budget this year.
Yep.
As a play on. On the hundred?
Yes.
On 100,000. No one better than the federal government today. Uh, any more questions or any expenditures? Let's go to student activity. If anyone wants to jump back to something, I'll just make up. Okay, if there are any questions or comments on any of the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion. Okay, we got a motion? Got a second?
Second.
Okay, motion second on consent agenda, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carried. Uh, let's talk about that six-month CD renewal.
Yeah, sorry, six months is up.
Six months is up. What would be the interest rate?
As of yesterday, it was 4.3%.
Oh. Yeah, I think we, we should, otherwise it sits and does nothing.
So, my only question on that was if we decided to move forward bus-wise. I know that's down the agenda here, but, um, is it something we have to put deposits down on? That kind of stuff, where we would need some of that, or is it something that's available?
We, we have some funds in savings.
Okay.
That we could use for those.
Okay.
So, if we look back at balance sheet. And then I'm in my right, Amber, um, column eight, or item eight. If I have a $1,000 CD at 496, you know, that's some change in savings accounts. So, it's, guess we're gonna spend more than that.
Nope, just wanted to make sure. I would make a motion to renew the CD.
Okay, got a motion. Renew the CD.
I'll second that.
Motion is second, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay, motion carries. Okay. And with that, we'll go into principal reports, and however you guys want to do teacher reports or on that order on the agenda.
Cool. Um, we had parent-teacher conferences last week. I had two teachers that had to cancel and reschedule parent-teacher conferences due to illness. So, um, my best guess at attendance right now is 91%. Mrs. Adamson is currently doing conferences right now. So, if all of hers attend, we'll be at a 96% attendance for parent-teacher conferences. So, that was pretty good. Mrs. Pretzer and Mrs. Christiansen will do a FastBridge update after Dr. Vogel is done. We've been looking a lot at our math specifically and how we've been doing that. Our reading curriculum is new, so that's still just in the process of getting familiar with all of that. For math, all of the teachers in Taylor are teaching every standard every quarter. So, we're trying to see how that will, um, help our scores and different things like that. And right now, we don't have the best data with FastBridge, so I'll let them kind of explain what they're doing with FastBridge and how we will be able to see that data and if that is, that method of teaching math is working or not. Um, some updates, today we had Amanda Olson from DPI visited the elementary school. She's the nutrition's, childhood nutrition specialist, as well as the farm-to-school specialist. So, she came out and visited with Mrs. Redka and Mrs. Ravinius on the greenhouse and gave them some more opportunities for grants and things like that. Ate lunch with us, had some of our greenhouse radishes, so. Uh, she's also working with Paula on a grant through the state as well for a salad bar at Taylor as well. The fourth graders went to the brick company in Hebron, that was back in October. But Mrs. Adamson suggested to like make a connection with what they learned at the brick company. So, this week, Mrs. Martin started clay in her classroom, so they're learning the process of actually making what they saw over there. So, we'll see how those turns out. She did not make bricks, they're making something different. Hopefully. On Friday, we'll be kicking off our Jump Rope for Heart with the American Heart Association. So, that one hits a little close to home because Mrs. Max Littleboy, she gave me permission to share that he is a heart child. So, she's pretty excited to be able to reintroduce that back. So, um, the American Heart Association is sending a rep out on Friday to do a little kickoff with us. And then Cassie will run that program during gym class, so she's pretty excited about that. Also on Friday, talk to me about how I'm liking my job after Friday. We're gonna do our bucket, our first bucket-filling session because our TRE bucket is full. So, the kids have been working really hard on respect and kindness and how we can portray that not only in school but outside of school. So, we have a special guest coming on Friday to tell some stories and we'll have some treats and stuff like that. And not giving any more information in case they're listening, it's all a secret. You might hear me. So, that's all I have aside from FastBridge update when Chelsea and Alicia share that.
Okay, so athletic report, she just wanted to let people know that there's 11 junior high girls out. Skylar Dressler is the coach. Junior high boys' basketball and high school boy-girls' basketball starts November 18th. Expecting about 15-ish boys out for seventh and eighth grade. Ron Luff and Chase Christiansen are coaching. We are starting one month earlier this year. That is different from past years, that is scheduled just in case that they're able to roll over to a C squad. High school girls, expecting around 20 girls. Logan Miller is the head coach, Cassie Laura is the assistant. And high school boys' basketball begins December 2nd. Carrie Dormand is head coach, Garrett Zent is assistant. And they're looking at numbers soon, they haven't had their meeting to kind of give us numbers. Conference percentage, we were at a 99%. We had our conferences a little bit earlier. We usually happen about a couple weeks before you guys. So, um, those that had to reschedule already have their rescheduled conferences. And so, um, the teachers worked really, really hard and put an extra time in because they have to do it on different nights if it works good for parents, different things like that. So, they did fantastic. We'll talk about CT and math in a little bit. Drama club, Mrs. Tuttero was going to do a junior high play. And the kids and her decided they wanted to do a drama club instead. So, with permission with what would go towards that play, they're now doing a drama club throughout the whole year. And they're gonna do a variety of different things, learning about plays, studying plays, watching plays, doing some fun nights, getting more involvement so that if they get enough people down the road, then we could do plays in that area. Career advisor-wise, we want to make a change with job shadows and college visits. Right now, we allow the juniors and seniors to go out for college visits and, um, job shadows. And we are suggesting that we give them those days out excused sophomore, junior year instead of junior-senior year so that they have better understanding and decisions what they want to do their senior year. And so, um, I don't know if you guys have any comments on that or not, but we would like to push it one year up so that they're getting out and starting to see things. And even if they don't like something, we want them to be able to come back and say, I for sure don't want to go into that. You know, and not waste time. So, um, some people think it's too soon. We think that the earlier they get out, the more they learn, the better decisions they're able to make and better conversations they're able to have with their families, so.
Well, my question on that then, why remove the senior, why not all three?
Well, they'll still get to.
Oh, okay.
They'll still get to go out, but we want to add excuse days their sophomore year.
Oh, so just add excuse sophomore is the asking time?
Yeah, we want to start earlier. Yeah, but they'll still get to go. And that's part of it too, is they might go visit a couple colleges or might a couple places work and say, I want to find something completely different. And we have to give them that time to do that, just to make better decisions and not waste time and money for people. So, other than that, um, been looking at some math patterns. And our math pattern started when we, uh, reveal in 2021. Um, and usually you have to give it a couple years to see how that's gonna go. I feel like we've given it a couple years. We've even included Glencoe last year. And with the four-year trend, we've gone from a 42 to a 30 to a 16 to an 8% in eighth grade. And I think we're past just watching a pattern. So, I have gone to Dr. Ziegler and asked to switch curriculum. And we still had, actually Mr. Isaac, where are you? Mr. Isaac, he's hiding there. Um, and Mrs. Messer, and Mrs. Laura Messer still had some Saxon math. And we always did very, very well on Saxon math because geometry's kind of involved into the curriculum through Saxon along with your algebra. But it's also an old form of mastery learning such as you learn a process and you're constantly repeating it as you go. And so, I'll let, uh, Mr. Weber and Mrs. Graham speak in a little bit. But I have talked to them and Mrs. Moore about going first through Saxon for the rest of the year from sixth grade through eighth grade plus algebra. Because we have those books and we have everything that goes with it. We did have to order a couple resources. Company of Saxon has closed, obviously, and they are going to retire their curriculum in 2027. Mr. Ziegler already called and checked on that. But I felt with the four-year trend that we were past waiting. And we had very good scores on Saxon. I did make some phone calls and we talked to a couple other districts, and some of them went back to Saxon. Which was kind of reassurance that maybe some of the new curriculum that is being pushed maybe isn't necessarily a quick fix to anything, which we're not necessarily looking for. But, um, we did have a meeting, Dr. Ziegler and Lindsay and I, and Lindsay also stated that there's a couple struggles with their curriculum about having to pull a lot. So, our teachers are having to pull a lot of different information until the kids can reach the level that those other books were at. Saxon, literally, what they can do is teach a process the first 15, 10 to 15 minutes and have practice the rest of the period while the teacher is walking around the classroom and assisting with that, as we used to. And we'll have to push it pretty hard. The teachers are being really good sports. They really are, like, like very positive, good sports. The trade-off is, is they don't have to go out and keep pulling all this stuff. It saves them a ton of time, but their time goes into grading, but that also means the kids are practicing more. So, um, I know we're on TV, but I will say Dr. Ziegler was a little quiet at first when I said I have a drastic change that I think we need to do. And I think he made a couple phone calls, I think there was some conversations between him and Jody also. But that's where we're at. And like, I just want to stress that the teachers were awesome when I say, hey, I have this plan, we should just try it because after four years, we've tried something else and I don't feel like it's where we need to be. After that, after this year, we can reassess and decide, do we need to stay there? Do we need to add to it? Do we need to find something new? And go from there since they're retiring, but we do have a little bit of time.
Yep.
To kind of review.
And you said that was 2027?
Yeah.
And that was grades six, seven, eight?
Six, seven, eight, plus algebra. So, we have eighth grade and ninth grade algebra. But they'll be using it in the eighth grade, yeah.
Then what are the upper grades still using?
They're using...
The McGraw-Hill.
The McGraw-Hill.
This is, yeah, so they just don't call it a reveal.
But they're...
But it's the same, it's the same.
It's the same company, but as the reveal.
The reveal, oh.
Yeah, they just don't call it a reveal.
But they're specialized classes. Go ahead.
Oh, but so then that's your trigonometry and your calculus.
Yeah, so they're still geometry, algebra II, pre-cal, calculus, yeah. Yeah, it's just, they just don't stop calling it a reveal, even though it's, it's the same type of curriculum.
Yeah.
So, are we seeing the same type of information on that with that program as well, or is it?
Score-wise?
Yeah.
Actually, there's...
It's harder to tell because they, they only test them in 10th grade.
10th grade, yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's hard to tell because the heads kind of just fluctuate with the classes.
Sure.
But those, those ones haven't seen the constant drop that they granted.
Yeah, they haven't seen it.
So...
And I think one, once they get that base, seventh through ninth grade, they get that base. The geometry, algebra II, and pre-cal, it just builds on the base. They need that base, and that's where we're falling, seeing that the kids are falling down is the base information that they're not retaining when they take these tests or going into the next class.
So, on that, um, do we have any? So, the percentages you quoted that we've seen, was that on just ND Insights or what? Do we have any other assessments that, that we're using?
Well, our FastBridge we just started, our Renaissance Star, we didn't necessarily see the same thing.
It, it, the two didn't correlate?
Guess I know.
How about even just like classroom assessments? Do we feel like, I guess the question I'm trying, trying to get at is, do we feel that the data we're getting from the state is reflective of what we actually have going on? Or, or not?
Yes and, yes and no.
Some students, yes, some students, no. High-performing students will perform high on the test.
Okay.
Then you have those in the middle that depends on the day. Some days they'll perform really well and the next day they won't. So, the one specific day we give them the test, if it's a bad day for them, it's gonna be a bad test for them.
Yeah, well, and that's, I think a lot of it is also taking the test, I don't know if seriously is the right word.
Sure.
But having the kids buy in to why it's important and why they need to do well. And a lot of schools are fighting this where students just go in and fill in the bubbles. You know, they're not even working on the problems. So, we need to break that and try and get them to feel that it's important. And I think our, our scores will go up then.
Well, that, or I'd encourage it, you know, let's get some more data, even if that's...
Well, and that's with, yeah, with FastBridge, we'll get that data. Stars did show, I mean, even in Stars, it was below where we should be, but it wasn't as far below as what the state assessment shows. Talking to other superintendents, one of them for sure thinks that something was wrong with the state assessment because they've always scored high. They win math competitions and they still won math competitions last year, but they didn't have anybody proficient in eighth grade. So, it's like, how are you winning these competitions, but yet no one's proficient? So, they're thinking something was up with that state assessment too. But now this year, it's gonna be a completely different state assessment. It's changing, so.
So, it's like starting over.
Yeah.
Well, and that's, again, I'd put less weight into the state assessment as I would into our own district, our own knowledge. You know, if you lean into that, that concept of is, is it the base? You know, how do we build that base? I'm not so sure that Saxon, I get the point of make a change and try. Saxon is very good at building, uh, the ability to do processes, but it lacks concepts. In holistic study of different curriculums I was involved in in Wyoming, that was glaring, that Saxon. You learn route repetition, speed, it can be good for, if that's your problem, you're slow and, and... But the actual concepts, not there. Students didn't understand why the sign is the opposite over the hypothesis. Don't know why. Can process lots of spit out the answers, but don't get why. So, that's a big part is trying to get the data on it. This is tough.
Yeah, well, and that's where the test too, because the test doesn't ask you why. It just says, can you do it?
Yeah, fair enough.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's, yeah, it's not a good thing.
And also to piggyback on that, I talked, after I found out we were going back to Saxon, I talked to a teacher that taught eighth grade math for 30 years, and she said that was the best curriculum that she's ever taught.
Sure.
So, I guess it's all relative on, you know, the information that, how, because everybody learns differently, right? So, just because it, it's repetition and it's whatever, well, I mean, that's what a lot of it is anyway, is repetition. I mean, doing it over and over again.
Can help.
Yep.
Right.
I'd just drive for the data that shows where our problem is, because it can, if it's, if that's the problem, that really helps go after it. But it's not any money, dollar.
Right.
And I know from an elementary standpoint, last year was very frustrating for, like, there were two of us that were doing the every standard every quarter, which essentially is what Saxon math is. We're just doing it on our own right now, trying to use reveal to piece it together. So, looking at the data in Renaissance from last year, it was very frustrating when you print that data off and it's red. Red, like all you ever see is the red. And then, um, as you got to fourth quarter, not allowing those kids to forget what they learned in first quarter, you could start seeing it. Now we're seeing the yellows, now we're seeing the green, that those kids are reaching that proficiency. And that's, that was our district assessment. So, Renaissance was our star math assessment. So, that was more of a district assessment that we used quarterly to assess data. So, um, somebody made that comment to me, maybe it was Russ, about the every standard every quarter is very relative to Saxon. Like, that's what we're trying to get back to without knowing that's what we were trying to get back to, so.
Yeah, spiraling of the, of the curriculum.
Yeah.
So, who would you like to speak first, FastBridge Math or CTE, cuz we also have Mr. Isaac up there. Would you like to stay on math and go to FastBridge then CTE?
Let's stay on math.
Let's stay on math.
Let's stay on math.
On the topic.
Who'd like to speak? For math-wise?
Go to FastBridge.
Yep. Oh, they wanted to stay on math.
Oh, they'd stay on math, okay. Um, what I have for you actually is, we're doing FastBridge and this, we're gonna have this around. This is just report that shows where they're starting, where they started when we took the score at the beginning of the, the year. And on FastBridge, we are able to monitor these kids bi-weekly, weekly, once a month, we can go in and monitor those kids to see if we're progressing or not progressing. So this is what it shows, a group of kids that I did, um, and they just took another progress monitoring last Friday, and this is some of the results, just showing if they're improving or not improving. And if you can see, most of, all the arrows are going up, so they improved from beginning of the year through when I tested the other day. And they've done a couple tests in between there too, so we try to do it every two weeks, they get to go in and test. And then this will give us a report as to how much they're improving or if they're on track. Okay, the second page I gave you was to help with the FastBridge, cuz FastBridge looks at fluency and accuracy and stuff, so the kids, we just started this doing, um, it's called ninety-nine math. And it goes in and they get to practice fluency, instead of counting with their fingers, they have to use their mind and um, put the information in. I can match it up with FastBridge where it'll do operations, I can set it up for it to number sense. And that's kind of what FastBridge looks like, so they can practice on here, which should improve their FastBridge reports too. And this we just started a couple of weeks ago, and the kids are actually really liking it, they're like, can we do it today, and it's like, no, you can't. Yeah, but this one is, they were just doing multiplication, this was for my seventh grade class, they're doing multiplication the other day. They can do it on their own, they can compete against each other in class, they're quite competitive when they're competing in class. But it makes them think faster and um, do the processes, they can flip from multiplying, dividing, to adding, I watched some today where they were doing all four operations in one set. It could be multiplying, it could be dividing, it could be adding, subtracting. And so it gives them a little bit more of confidence in themselves that we can do this, so then when they go to FastBridge, they're a lot more confident in FastBridge. So these two things that we're working on in those classes, um, and this program I came across, it doesn't cost anything for the teachers to have it. Kids can do practice at home, I have some kids practicing at home at night. If they're like, okay, what aren't you very good in? You know, FastBridge says you need more number sense, so then they go into the number sense and they practice in there. And I use this in my title class also. So these are two different reports we can have to show if our kids are progressing or not.
What kind of, besides the FastBridge, cuz we'll talk about that later too, but uh, for both of you, you've been switched to Saxon for about a week now?
Lucas just switched this week, cuz he had to finish something up first.
I just started. Oh, you just started. Right, so uh, what kind of things have you seen with the Saxon going forward, I know I've talked to some students and they like it a lot better than the, than the reveal, but uh.
I've talked to a couple too, and they just, they like the um, the repetition. The repetition, but the focus.
They said that the questions are easier to understand, they're, yeah, so I don't know what you've seen.
Because, well, part of it is because it talks more in their terms. Um, some of the books that we've had, they're trying to teach them a concept using decimals and fractions right away, instead of using whole numbers. Where they learn the concept and then they go to decimals and fractions instead of. So the concepts are there and then we repeat it every day a little bit, we keep adding on to it.
Yeah.
So that's where we keep building every day on to what we learned to start out with. And it, it'll do anything from, it'll do decimals, fractions, it gets into geometry. Um, and it'll keep doing geometry all the way through, and we know that that's one of our low areas is geometry. So before I was doing, even before Christmas, I would do one week where we did, just did geometry. But now what we're doing in the Saxon book is the geometry I did do before Christmas, they're starting it now and it continues. Every day they're gonna do a little bit of geometry. They're gonna do a little bit of fractions, they're gonna do a little bit of adding decimals, a little bit on money, money is one thing that we didn't have in our other book, it didn't deal with adding up money. Um, and so they do a little bit of that every day. So I actually started doing that with some of the key classes I have that are not in Saxon, doing the same um, pattern repetition day after days, they do, they do one or two problems each day, they learn a new concept, but then the next day they come back, they keep building on that. And so the ones I started the last three or four days, it seems like they're doing better in their regular concepts as long as I keep that repetition going.
Is, is the current Saxon, what we're talking about here, the same as what we had twenty-five years ago?
Oh, no, I'm getting version of that.
Right.
We're all here.
I think it's in two thousand seventeen.
They grew up on Saxon.
Seventeen, yeah.
And then two thousand fourteen.
Was it still, was it still Wayne Saxon?
I liked it.
I did teach it, I did. I taught it.
His author, yeah, yeah.
I recall though, I think, I remember when we were kind of basing it out, that one of the biggest drawbacks with Saxon was you have to teach it in order, you can't, and that's, you can't jump around, and that's the biggest part, when you're teaching those standards.
Oh, sure, yeah, you can't.
You can't jump around.
Same.
Yeah.
If you're a fourth grade teacher, you, you have to go in that order, you can't flip, oh, I'm gonna go and teach this unit today, that's the biggest kickback with Saxon I recall.
Yeah.
And I even remembered that in first grade too, you had to go, I loved it too, you know what I mean, I loved, I loved, I felt like kiddos knew their math in first grade, but, you know, it, I don't know, if there's pros and cons to every curriculum that you have.
Yeah.
That's just one of the.
But I, I haven't noticed much of a difference yet, cuz, but I've only done a couple of days of it.
Right.
And the stuff we've done is things like they absolutely know, like it's not even, like, they all know it, so it was just review. Um, biggest thing I noticed that looked like the first sixty lessons, there's little known work problems. It is just computation, which is fine, but that's where the difference, like the McGrath Hills definitely, it's, I'm not saying it's successful at it, but it's trying to focus more towards the thinking about the problem.
Right.
But the issue is that from, somewhere from the late elementary to middle school, there's a gap where there isn't a base foundation. So they struggle trying to, trying to fill those gaps, that's what I've noticed, the biggest struggle.
Well, I talked to some, some teachers too, and they said the reveal is more like an English assignment, so if you're, if you're a struggling reader,
Yeah.
you're gonna have problems in math.
Which I don't, I don't think is good for lower grades, cuz it's like, you're, you're just trying to build those foundational knowledge.
Yeah.
Until you are at that level to understand.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that's why you seem more successful, I assume with that curriculum versus the younger grades.
I think you said too.
Right.
And Lucas said that you're probably doing a couple a day, actually.
I probably will till I get about halfway through, I'll probably do two a day.
Yeah, if they already know it, I mean.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, we did that today, we did two lessons in one, they'd already done, gone through it, the first part of the year, there's some lessons we can do together, cuz it's just a review for that.
Right.
Yeah.
Mr. Weber, tell me more about what, what your, you know, some specifics about when you say base concept, uh, what are those?
Well, like, so, so if you're learning, say, we're talking about graphing linear functions and students are struggling with multiplying something by a negative or anything to do with negative numbers or some of the fraction, you're going back to refocus on something that should be a foundational knowledge that they already have, and then it just keeps taking away from learning the new thing. Because they keep having these little things in the way, which everyone makes little mistakes, but it's beyond that. It's where there's just struggling with these basic concepts that they need to learn the new stuff, so it just makes it hard and hard to learn the new stuff. You're always playing catch-up. So I think this Saxon stuff definitely does hammer home that stuff. So I think that's where that can benefit.
Yeah.
Especially the computational stuff.
So is it fair to say that some of our problem might be scope and sequence of, we get to, cuz I heard we get to a spot and we hit a, hit a wall?
Maybe, but I think some, I think some of it's things just change, like standards have changed, so things that might be taught in third grade and now taught in fourth, so you have gaps.
Are we missing something in the sequence? Oh.
So there's just things that naturally get missed because they're always changing stuff, I think that's an issue too.
Yeah.
And then these curriculums, they're trying to adjust and make things more focused towards critical thinking, deeper learning, those are the educational buzzwords. So they're trying to hit those, so people buy their curriculum.
Right.
It's cuz it, I mean, it is fundamentally better to do that, but.
We hit on a bunch right there, so, commercialism is.
But it's just.
Yeah.
It's just um, they just don't do a great job building towards that, cuz I think some of the questions they ask in the high school books are good, but, you know, it's just hard to get to that point.
Yeah, well, and I think, I mean, as a former math teacher, I always didn't understand uh, why they're trying to teach abstract ideas to students who don't have the ability for abstract thought.
Yeah.
I mean, we shouldn't be teaching algebra to first, second, third, and fourth graders, cuz they can't mentally grasp that.
Right.
Yeah.
But, but I think that's where a lot of those things are coming in too, the misses.
Yeah, build the foundation, build confidence.
Yeah.
The, big picture question of all our teachers, I heard several times, standards change this, how much control? Do you, do you guys feel empowered to determine what you teach yourselves, or is it just, man, I better do these standards, that's all, let's do it?
First of all.
So you see, I'll get more specific, you see a problem like that of, hey, I don't have, this concept right here, I don't have it. I got my junior, my sophomores, they don't have this concept, they can't, do you feel empowered to go back and teach it, even though you're outside your standards, okay, we do? But how about just the, the content of your class, is that, are we, whatever the state tells us? Marching orders, away we go, are we in there, or are we?
No, I do a lot of um, making sure they understand the base, the basis of standards and stuff, so if I see there's something they're missing, I will go back and we will revisit that a number of times and we will drill the heart on it. Even though it might not be a standard, I know that it's gonna affect them down the road to get to that standard. It's like, they need this before they can even do the standard.
Yeah, just. They're just gonna keep running the same issue every year. Right, if you, if you don't, if you just ignore it, it just, it goes the same issue every single year.
Right, so I do that, yeah, I teach other than standards to make sure they have that base.
I mean, I for one, as a board member, would support, hey, if we don't get to all the standards, what we did was right for students. You know.
Yeah, but we just wanna make sure with the standardized testing, those numbers look bad. And we just gotta make sure we finally get those up too, like, to ground the aspect of it. But it is something, we just gotta make sure that we find, and I think this would help with the standardized testing aspect.
Well, in a, in a similar statement, I as a board member would be more interested in seeing us do what's right for our students at their level, meet them and grow them, than I would be concerned about, I'll stand up and testify, if the test at the state level or whatever, representative comes and asks me, how are we doing, if we had district assessments and teacher data, like I said, even if it's quizzes, that she just gave me, that showed improvement, whatever, then on what the state says, right? I think it'll take care of itself when we have the right curriculum and scope and sequence, right?
Yeah.
But I would like to say that empowering the teacher to make those decisions is of higher value than a score on a, on a website, in my opinion.
So I have a question, um, so the strategic meeting plan, when we were talking about math and you're talking about the scores, maybe I misunderstood, but when he looked at it, he told us that our math scores really weren't that bad, but there was a subsection that was low and that one was bringing our overall math score down.
Oh, yeah.
So I guess I'm confused when you're saying our math scores aren't good, but he said he looked at it in two seconds, he could tell they're really not that bad, we just have one section of students whom we need to build upon and that's what's bringing our overall score down.
I don't think he looked at it well enough, honestly, uh, cuz it, when you look at it, in eighth grade, I think we had one, two, proficient. And, and those, one of those is actually one of the subgroups that he said is bringing it down, so.
And that one was very high.
Yeah, so I think it's more of a, a systemic thing than a, than a, than a group of people. The people, the group of people that he thought was bringing it down, we only had, at the high school, we have three kids.
Oh.
In different grades.
In that area that.
In different grades, not just in eighth grade.
In different grades.
Oh, okay.
So that subgroup isn't gonna bring our, our test score down that much. I think at Taylor, you have two, one.
So do you wanna go on to FastBridge and explain what that is?
Okay, so are you all familiar with FastBridge, the overview of it, I printed, you guys aren't familiar with that, I didn't know for sure, I have a printed ops, basically.
Yeah.
What an overview of what FastBridge is, so basically.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna click the note all right.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay, I'll be the one that I know.
No, 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 not stop that.
I don't get the other.
That's not what I mean, give us the noise.
Oh!
You're gonna quiz this.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah. So basically, it's written like star stars. Um, so we've moved into, so basically then we have a screening, it's a universal screener. So we use it three times a year, so we'll be, we used it this beginning of the fall and we, I believe, we changed it to January and then again at the end of hopefully April-ish again, so universal screener, so that's really key that um, all kids are, it's reliable, valid data that we're doing that. Alicia and I conducted all of the testing K through four at the beginning, but we're just starting to implement it into the teachers, so the teachers will be able to help us this next go around um, with their individual classrooms.
I was just gonna say, it's threefold, it's testing math.
Oh, yeah.
And English reading skills as well as SCL.
Yeah, our social language.
So.
So we, yeah, and I don't know if Sarah has
Not sure if it's been utilized, but.
done that with, when she, for counseling, when she goes in, I'm not too sure if she had talked about it.
She hasn't.
The class, some of the classroom, two of our classroom teachers in Taylor just did it on their, like if it's compute, cuz they can do the computer-based one.
Not yet, okay. Oh, right. Mm-hmm.
It's like, I know fourth grade did theirs, and I think Mrs. Max might have done that SCL for her too.
That's right, I do remember that.
Okay.
So it does have that um, component to it, to it, which is great. Um, so basically then right away, so then we are able to identify immediately what students are at risk, some risk and are on track. Breaks it down into those three categories, then that's where um, Mrs. Pritzer and at that high school level, Mrs. T, Mrs. Graham, then we're able to break into our interventions.
Miss Graham, yeah.
What we're doing in the elementary part is, um, we had decided that we have a lot of the three tiers. So your tier one would be your ones that are on track. Tier two, they're kind of, I consider those my bubble kids, all right, so they're needing a little bit more of, we can't, they could go either way, you know, we wanna keep, you wanna monitor those students and then you have those three, tier threes, those at risk. And that's who, um, Alicia and I are um, taking three interventions now. I'm strictly doing all of reading all day long, I have a thirty-minute lunch break and I, that's it, I have interventions all day and then Alicia.
Yeah. Yeah. And uh, the same with math, I probably two-thirds math interventions and one-third music maybe per take.
Yeah. Right, so we're pretty full all day long and so.
All day long with short lunch.
Yeah, it's pretty crazy.
So.
Tell me, tell me more about that, what is it, what does it look like, is it a one-on-one student?
Oh, for the, for testing, assessing?
No, the intervention.
Intervention.
Oh, all right, so, it kinda depends on.
It depends.
It depends on the student and how severe the need or intervention needs to be, um, sometimes we're pulling, I have a couple students I pull individually um, and work with them just because they need that eye contact and, you know, um, intense help and others, we pull in small groups of I don't know, I think my largest small group is four students.
Yeah, my largest is five this year and that's very, been rare, I've taken, but I, we've really zoned in, I'm trying to get smaller. And I, I do take a few individuals, I do two, two, three, four is, and five, I have one group of five and that's it. So we're really trying to intervene on those at-risk kids, trying to get them pulled up, trying to really target K one. K one is a really big with reading, if you don't get those kiddos by the end of first grade, we all know that statistics and research shows even my first, yeah, yeah.
And you two are just working K through four?
Yes, yeah.
And so what's your student load?
I'm servicing forty-eight students, I didn't count that up, yeah.
Forty. Take a guess.
Yeah.
Um, twenty-two, maybe something like that, so.
Yeah. And so, I'm, I dear, we do see tier two and. And so I'm, I dear, we do see tier two and two, three, um not as many tier twos, so that's why we're pushing, we're going to show the teachers, actually tomorrow morning, we're going to meet and show the teachers, the next step then is you go into your progress monitoring, and that's a tool that is really nice with FastBridge, that's what it's all about. We've been missing that key component for interventions, that progress monitoring, we've been doing it, you just don't have the data to back it up, if that makes sense. So now it's really nice, we have those data points, um when your student isn't making those gains, you go back and you look at yourself and say, why isn't this working, there's a lot of different reasons, what could, maybe your intervention isn't working, maybe they need something more strategic put in place for them, and you better revamp what you're giving them, or maybe it's not enough time, which is the biggest factor, is the time aspect, but. So that's where that progress monitoring piece is, and then that allows us to go to the next step, you know, is it, that student not learning, is there some learning disability, is there, what other factors are we blaming for, that lets us bring that, to have that piece too, to our West River services, they like to have that documentation too. So that totally helps our case too. The biggest downfall that I thought would be is that for the, they have intervention, um interventions for you to use for the students. But I don't know, maybe I'm just getting around the block, or I knew them all.
Yeah.
So I thought, wow, this is so exciting, they're gonna give me new ones on comprehension, and that was the biggest letdown that day.
They knew the time, right.
But it makes you feel good that we're doing those things, and the teachers are all doing those interventions, it's just now we have it all on the computer and it's all, it's nicely out, and you know, there's pros and cons of, I do miss stars too, and hey, you know, to every, there's something new all the time, so it's a learning process too for us, Mrs. Pritzer and I have a few more gray hairs because of.
We're hoping to start tomorrow to um help our teachers get started with looking at the data and deciding which that bubble group that Chelsea said earlier,
Yeah.
which group might need a closer watch, um and to help our teachers learn how to set some of those groups up, so that we're progress monitoring those students with the interventions that teachers are already doing in the classroom, but it'll give us a closer watch to see are we making progress in the right direction, or do we need extra help, so that before they slip down to that tier three, you know, we can catch them up by whatever.
Yeah, catch up before that.
So it's a work in progress, but we're making small steps, I think.
Yeah.
A small step.
Yeah.
Well, that's what Chelsea was saying, they're doing most of the interventions already, but we didn't have, we didn't have a method to show are the interventions working.
Right.
So that's what this is, is gonna be enough, but it does take time.
It's time, yeah.
You said that several times, I wrote down, you said time is the biggest factor, tell us more about what, do you feel like you don't have enough time with each student, you're not enough resources, not enough people, what's the?
Big, yeah, it's a lot of this with.
At the beginning of the year, just getting familiar with the program, and being able to utilize it, and does it work with this student, and then how do we read the data, and what does it, you know?
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, it's just all those little pieces and steps that come with a first open review of a program, um so some of that is just getting familiar with it, but then
Yeah.
you know, every kid always needs a few more minutes of of practice or.
Yeah, and it is time for those, those kids that are at risk, they do need thirty to sixty minutes additional time, if you really want to see difference.
Thirty to sixty minutes per week, I think, per student, per day.
Per student, per day.
Day is what it suggests.
That's what research states, that you should at least sixty, sometimes sixty to ninety, you know.
That's what it shows. Yeah, depending on the intensity. There just aren't that many minutes in a day.
But, I know.
So, so when do you fit that in?
I don't know.
I don't know, you know.
You know, you, uh you just do the best you can, you know what I mean, you pull, the teachers are so flexible, we pull.
But how do you fit it in right now, I mean, right now, when you do the students, are you, I assume they come out of the classroom and and go for some intervention, or they go back to the classroom after?
Yeah, right now.
Twenty to thirty.
Usually twenty to thirty minutes.
Twenty to thirty minutes.
Twenty to thirty minutes. So that they're back in the classroom, right?
Hopefully a week.
Yeah.
Uh every day, you know, four times a week, sometimes five, depending on the group.
Maybe. And we scheduled that around, so that when they are pulling, they are not missing core in the classroom.
Right.
Yeah, it's right.
Because they also need the core in the classroom, so their pull-out times are scheduled around each teacher's core instruction, so they're not missing those pieces later.
Sure.
And then the opposite side of that, which is unfortunate too, though, is they are missing other things.
Yep.
Yes.
You know, whether it be art, music, B E, whatever it may be, then they're gonna miss that time.
Yeah. Sometimes we do also push in to classrooms in some cases where there's a large amount of tier-two students.
Right.
Yeah.
I push in a couple times during, a couple days a week where I am in a classroom where I help assist with a bigger group of students on on a reading skill or a math skill, you know, um just as in an effort to sort of give help to a larger group.
Which one's more effective, pull out or the push in?
We're tier two, I don't, I like pushing in, cuz I get to, I get to help a variety, and I see the progress, I know we're doing fine, so I can concentrate over here.
For tier three, in my opinion, has to be for that small group to pull out and move right on.
And that is where the smaller groups come in, like you heard Chelsea say, that's rare, group of five is rare, so in the past, we've always tried to pull tier two and tier three, but that's not the way that it's supposed to be done, and so then when you look at FastBridge, there's no way.
Okay.
There's absolutely no way that these two can pull tier two and tier three, so that's why we're trying to get those tier-two interventions in the classroom, which are happening, we just want to monitor them now.
Yeah.
Other question? I'm glad you do it, I don't know how you do it, but I'm glad you do it.
Oh, I love it. I'm gonna ask her.
At our A C T C meeting the other, last week, we had called the principals, and Superintendent Donovan Henniger, they're using an A I for reading, and he said it's really, and I don't know nothing about it. But, he said it's working really good.
Heard good things about it.
Yeah, so A I is not replacing teachers, but helping, so maybe there's some help in the future with that.
I got some emails out, but that question is specific, cuz I wanna know if it's going to help title-specific classrooms, like what it, what can it be utilized for, so I haven't heard anything back on that yet.
Is it, is FastBridge or what, is it showing any trends of our, excuse me, of our classes through time? Or do we have a feel of that, of saying that, well, compared to past three years, we're seeing more students that are needing intervention, less constant, or we have like, all right, we can say that.
Projectory.
Yeah.
With any of that?
Yeah, we've only tested once, so we don't have the data.
Yeah. Do you have any other metric of knowing that, like as a district, where we're trending as far as?
No, a lot of it too, you know, you have kindergartners that come in, and what's, you you see a big difference of exposure, basically is what it comes down to. If students that are exposed to variety of things, I'm saying academic lives, and then you have the ones that are not, and that's where you're playing catch-up. You have those group of, say, five, and then that's where you're always playing catch-ups, you're trying to get them caught up to that rest of, you know, that already know their A B Cs, the sounds, they're ready to rock and roll, let's start the reading process, and kindergarten is where you're at now. And then you're just constantly going to first grade, and then you have those ones that are reading chapter books, and you're just, it just is a common, same with math acts, same kind of concept there, yeah.
So is there a lot of, each year, see what we got and make adjustments and try to, or can we predict, like, you could say for the twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six year, we expect this? Or is it gonna be another, see what we got and deal with it?
We can use the spring assessment to kind of see how to plan for the fall, so it's not like a start over.
Something like that.
Yeah.
And if we do that effectively, it would save us time, but you do have to take into the fact that some students do things over the summer academically and some don't, and then lose a little bit, um so you do still have to adjust it, but it wouldn't be like a complete start over, if that makes sense.
Yeah, well, I think we get a good idea of kindergarten too by the number of kids in preschool.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, not necessarily.
True too, yeah, we have a little bit.
What is, what is the number, is it pretty close preschool to kindergarten, or are there a lot of kids not going preschool?
This year, in my research, was the total opposite, like Mrs. Haley said, normally, the majority of her kids have been in preschool and minimal that were not, and this year is completely opposite, like there were, help me, Bonnie, ten new.
Ten, that were in preschool last year.
That were not.
Plus we had new ones that come in.
And she's got twenty-four in class, so that's a big, it's huge, it's got some big number, yeah.
That's huge. Plus we had several new that maybe attended preschool elsewhere, so they were coming into us new, we had no clue, you know, where they left off at, where they came from for preschool, so.
I'll be quiet.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Wanna go on to C T E?
Well, I tried my, uh, I gotta celebrate a PowerPoint before I. Oh. But I tried it yesterday, I don't know if this works, is this S P library in here? No, let me, let me disconnect.
Thank you.
S P conference room, it should be. Why is this not finding?
Windows game, ready?
Yeah.
You should jump over here.
Yeah, should have, didn't work yesterday.
Do you have a little button on the bottom right-hand card for projectory?
Maybe we can find other places. Should be all.
No.
I think Adam's next door, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is he still here?
Yeah, he has to.
All right, well, I'll pass out some more homework for you then. I was, uh.
But Ross was on first.
Hoping to, I'm gonna summarize some of this stuff when we talk, when we pass it down.
Okay.
Want to pass it down, and then I got a couple, I'm sure anybody wants some, and I can crown one, anybody wants some. And I can start without the PowerPoint, so uh I requested some time today to talk about what I do in my classes, because of a strategic planning committee meeting. Uh, there was a comment that said, we still can't figure out how to get kids to the Dickinson C T E. And in my head, I said, I didn't know we were trying, so I thought about uh who's on the board here, and you know, if if a decision like that is made in whatever capacity you guys would be the ones to make it, so I wanted to make sure you all know uh what I do. I think Jody's got a good idea, cuz he's on, he was on our C T E advisory committee meeting forever, probably. He's listened to me spiel about my stuff for the last several years, and we, uh, I was gonna mention that later, but, so I don't forget, we will have a advisory committee meeting coming up in the next month sometime, everybody is welcome to attend, if you wanna learn more about what I do, what Mrs. Norman does in business and marketing, and what Mrs. Mason is doing with career advising. The advisory committee meeting is made up of teachers, students give reports, and community members that are either involved in the field, or parents of students, or somebody else that has interest in it, and it's a requirement from the state uh for for us to be our funding, but I'm hoping, we've gotten benefits out of it too in the past, so.
Really, when you decide when that's gonna happen, can you email us?
I will email the school board group, yeah, it'll probably be in the next month on some evening.
Thank you, I'll send it.
Okay, so I have some uh things on this uh handout here that I want, I'd like to quickly go over, I'll probably try to do it fast, so. But there were some endings, what is taught, why is it taught, what are the benefits of it being taught here, and what do the students think? So I'm gonna start with, why is it taught? If I go back to when the school started, um, well, first of all, we're a C T E, a state-funded C T E program. That means we get funding for equipment and funding that funds a portion of my salary, depending on the classes I teach, which are approved through my supervisor at the state. Uh, this past summer, I applied to expand our programs, and we were getting probably, I don't know exactly, maybe seventy-five percent of the classes I teach funded this past summer, I applied, and now every class I teach is funded, so. So it's, it doesn't fully cover my salary, but it's a portion, uh maybe twenty-eight percent, or somewhere around there, depending. Uh, the history of the school here, when the, when the school first was, were first opened, we had shop classes, shop basically meant hands-on instruction. In the seventies, that kind of became known as industrial arts here, uh industrial arts uh classes are meant using tools to design and fabricate a project, so there was design involved. Uh, related job field, or related educational field was vocational education, which meant learning technical skills required to complete a specific job. So they both use tools, one is more design aspect, one is more skilled trade, you start to see these shop classes split apart into different fields. In the nineties, approximately, uh industrial arts became known as technology education, technology education is applying knowledge and processes when using tools and materials to change the physical world, and that came about probably because of the increased adoption of computerized tools. Drafting, it was no longer hand drafting, it was computerized drafting, there were C N C machines, so we started getting more and more advanced uh tools in that aspect, uh currently, it's known as technology and engineering education. So engineering got thrown into it, that, my definition is create creatively and critically applying science and math to innovate and design solutions to problems. And that's my opinion, but I'm a professional engineer, so. A related C T E program is trade in industry and technical education, which is preparing for careers in a variety of trades, such as construction, plumbing, electrical, welding, hands-on type trades. So simply stated, the definitions are, for me, technology and engineering is problem-solving with tools, and trade industry and technical education is learning a skilled trade. All right, the focus of the current program here, the previous instructor, Mr. Roe Wetter, many of you know, was grandfathered in, kind of through all these changes through the years, cuz he was here for forty-one years. So he kind of got to keep doing what he thought was good and and changed when he thought appropriate. I don't have a teaching, well, I have an alternative teaching license, but I didn't go to school, I don't have a teaching degree, so when I got my teaching job here, I was licensed to teach all jobs that were based on engineering, so there were production-type jobs that I didn't get added to my teaching license, like wood production, metal production, comblay, no one else in school is worth working on welding, those classes, I couldn't specifically teach anymore. But uh they're important, I think. What I did is I kind of meshed some of the projects, our our semester-long welding class became a quarter-long welding project in a manufacturing class, so we still do it, it's reduced a little bit, we still do it, woodworking got thrown into construction. Uh, I do my best to mesh kind of the programs of tech and engineering and trade in industry and technical education, cuz we don't have someone here teaching trade industry and technical education, so if we don't, if I focus the, a previous state superintendent was really intent, it seemed like, on just developing engineers, well, not everybody is gonna be an engineer, you have all these people that are kids that are technicians, are more interested in hands-on problem solving, we don't leave these out in the cold, cuz we don't have that specific here, so I try to, I try to mesh both of them together. And I think that's a benefit to both sets of kids, because if you have kids that are more inclined to think critically and problem solve, they're then introduced to uh skilled skilled trades. If you got kids that are more inclined just to do a hands-on, they. If you got kids that are more inclined just to do a hands-on, then, then they're kind of pushed to problem solve and critically think because they're both in all the classes. For example, the other day we did, uh, we replaced the, some of my power cords on my grinders, uh, for the metal shop. And we watched the video, figured out how to do it. And I had a kid that is extremely good at critical thinking and problem solving and he didn't want to touch the thing because he thought he was gonna break them. So he's like, can I get someone else to help me that's more hands-on? Well, he, he kind of got into it a little, a little bit because we did it in that class. I had another student that dove right in because he does hands-on stuff. But he didn't really think about what he was doing and before he knew it, he took a bunch of screws out that didn't really affect accessing the switch. Think about it, you only had to take this screw over here to access the switch. So I think, I try to, you know, see what the kids are lacking and try to bolster them, uh, in those ways. My early classes, uh, eighth, ninth, and tenth graders are focused more on developing critical thinking and problem solving skills. When they produce smaller objects, they use like popsicle sticks, hot glue, bandsaw, drill press, some of the, some of the smaller, smaller tools, 3D printer. Uh, when the juniors and seniors come, they apply the critical thinking and problem solving skills they had been learning in those younger grades and start working on more advanced projects where they use welding, uh, CNC machines, table saws, they mix concrete. So it becomes more real world applicable in, in that, but they still are problem solving. So that's kind of a little background on why, uh, we don't have a welding class here. I heard one, one time last year, someone said, well, you guys don't have a welding class. And I was like, well, we do it, we just, I can't call it a welding class. So that's why, and but, and that's how I try to incorporate some of these things. So, any questions over? Probably not, okay. So what is taught? I kind of explained why I teach things, so what is taught? There's a table on here, you can read through, but I thought maybe you'd rather see it. So I made a, a PowerPoint up before you look through and hopefully this thing works. It's not working. Hold on, where's that? Okay, there it goes. Okay, so eighth grade classes applying technology, so basically this is my first class. Um, it's basically to introduce them to tech and engineering classes. They learn concepts and then they follow instructions to make fun hands-on projects. There's an example of some instructions where they make things like this, they make a water rocket on the far right there that shoots in the air. After they learn about, uh, forces of lift and drag and that type of thing. They learn, after they learn about buoyancy and density, they make a higher boat. Uh, they learn how to sketch on a computer aided drafting program, which is down in the left-hand corner, one of the students last year made a full set of chess pieces and then they can 3D print it on 3D printer. And we learn about construction and they made a construction project and most girls got, uh, kind of architecturally involved there. So eighth grade is basically to get them interested in the class. Foundations of technology is the only required class that I have for one semester. And the, and the goal of that is to teach kids a problem solving process. And this is the one that they use. Doesn't, uh, it's called the engineering design process, there's multiple versions of this. If you go out and look, it's an educational thing, I'd never heard of it until I started teaching engineering, even though I did engineering for a long time. But it makes sense to me because it gives them steps to go through when they have a problem to solve. And instead of following instructions to make a project, they have to design their own. So on the left, you see the, the kids designed a marshmallow launcher that tries to launch marshmallows into a hoop. And on the right, they have a balsa wood crane that they had to do some calculations with and to try to support the most weight. So there's pictures of some of those projects in action. So they're, they're not really given instructions to do things or given goals and limitations to try to meet those things. Now that they've learned a problem solving process, when they go to tenth grade, they get a lot of practice with a lot of problem solving things. So on the left, there's a rubber band car that they're given a random, uh, group of materials and they have to figure out how to make an axle turn with a rubber band. Uh, the right is a CO two car, they're given a block of wood, you see the one down on the bottom right hand and they shape it and however they like and design it. So you put a CO two cartridge in the back and shoot it down a track and see who can get the fastest or the best design. Uh, there's other things, some random other ones we do, there's a paper thing and here's a few of those projects in action. I think they're a little excited. Uh, then we get to the junior senior, senior level classes, we have ADA construction. ADA stands for advanced design application, so it's design based. Um, this is meant to be a one quarter class and then you go to another thing, second quarter. We do well, uh, woodworking, second quarter, using applications of construction. So there you see some kids on the top, uh, we learn about construction processes. So I guess on the bottom picture first, they decide the best use of a piece of land for some benefit and they, uh, that one was a community interaction, um, focus, they also do things that are focused on improving the infrastructure. They learn how to do some surveying, they get some math involved there. And then they take construction, some of those applications of construction and they come up with a woodworking project they want to make. So they do steps of construction, like the first step would be design. So some of them do computer, a computer model, some of them do it on paper. Then they also have to do a cost estimate, a schedule, project schedule, um, figure out the tools they're gonna use. It's kind of like mobilization of a construction project. So there's some of their paperwork they do and then they get to do the fun stuff where they get to work with the tools and make stuff. And it's, it's very personalized, every day pick their own projects for the vast majority of the time. Unless we have some kid that doesn't know what he wants to do, I have some suggestions, we can do some stuff. Uh, we have a manufacturing class, which is meant to be a quarter and go on something else, but we do manufacturing and then we do welding in the second half because it's a process, typically manufacturing, the kind, kind of the concepts they learners. Try to figure out an efficient assembly process, they learn about QC and QA or quality assurance, quality control, doing different types of projects. And then they get to play with hot stuff. So there's welding on the top left and bottom right, there's a plasma, hand plasma cutter on the bottom left. Cutting on the top right, various things in a metal shop, he's a horned metal, uh, melted metal in the, in the middle. Uh, the cool thing, one cool thing happened in this class a couple of years ago, a lot of cool things happened, but I had seven of my nine students were girls in this class.
So we had to buy pink helmets.
Yeah, we didn't have to, but we got a donation from the wind company. And I thought it was relevant that we should get the girls some pink helmet, so we got, and actually the guys like.
I was gonna say, I bet they did.
So these girls asked him, why, you know, I'm kind of, I'm glad you're here, but why'd you come? And they said, we just, we want to learn something new. I don't know if, if we didn't do that here, I don't know if they would bother seeking out that opportunity somewhere else. And here's a couple, sometimes it went pretty good, if you, the one on the left, uh, try, they're, they're trying to stick welding for the first time. And a cool thing was what she says, I don't know if you can hear it on the volume, but she says. So every one of these girls, at some point in the time, I could tell they were hesitant or nervous to try something, but they all did it. And sometimes it didn't go so well, but those are the fun times. Uh, we have a class eighteen, stands for advanced technological application, it's just, it's the fancy words, I guess. But we learn about agriculture, medical tools. Um, in the agriculture section, which is a quarter long, we, uh, they build an environment and grow some plants in some different ways. So they take some cuttings, they try to automate some of the processes like the lighting. Uh, the group on the left tried to automate their watering too, that didn't, didn't really go so well, but they tried. Um, on the right, they take some, mix up some hormones in a petri dish with, uh, a growth hormone and take little tiny cuttings and put it in a petri dish and try to grow them stuff that way. Uh, the medical side of it, they learn some, how to, the use, how to use and how real medical tools function. Some of the simpler ones like the, uh, stigmometre on the left or blood pressure cuff, I guess, but, uh. And then they also have a project where they try to make a circulatory system model using a water pump and a bunch of hose. And then they try to, uh, have a mock heart surgery where we shove a, a washer in there that's got a small hole. So it's got blockage and they have to either remove or bypass the blockage. And they, they're gonna try this on the, on the far right up there. I'm not sure I want. But it's problem solving, they, they're not given a method or body to do it, they gotta come up with some, some methods on what might work, so. Oh, I got my, my, uh, slide got a little messed up here. So engineering design class, uh, we learn about some basic, uh, concepts of engineering. They use advanced, uh, calculations of something. So that's what's covered up unfortunately on the left there, an advanced calculation of, of a concrete beam, actually, because I did that. And then you can learn how to automate that, that, those calculations in a spreadsheet to help it. Uh, on the left, he is, uh, making a concrete beam in a mold, she can't see. And on the right, then we break them. We did that, something I did in college, I have a UND professor that's come here many times, several times. He says he's never seen high school do that before, so. Um, there's a hidden on the left, there's calculations for a suspension bridge because they then, after the first quarter, they take the second quarter and they pick one project, it's called do it yourself engineering. And it's a pretty substantial project, so this group designed a suspension bridge, they followed a pattern, but it was changed. So it was, I made it wider than the original one, so all their calculations changed. They had to do all the calculations, they had to build it, they had to learn to use the tools to build it. And then they test it. And so sometimes the test, they're a little nervous about testing because they don't know how it's gonna go. My brain is a little nervous. But it held eight people later, so. Uh, here is a trebuchet that was designed, uh, a model after a very small version, so they had to, uh, do some calculations on the right too, with the, the different dimensions. And sometimes the tests don't go so well and you won't see it on this one, but they launch it, but the ball actually, it goes backwards instead of forwards, so. So you have some failures. But then you have some, uh, wins too, they're not so sure how it's gonna go. And this was a concrete sailboat, it's actually my showcase down in the hall. They made a spreadsheet, they had to calculate how big to make this sailboat, the, the hull, so it wasn't too heavy that it would sink or so, but that it was strong enough to, uh, not collapse. And they got a little excited because they worked on this a long time to see if it would float. And to top it off, we went to the Abbey Dam and floated out around the Abbey Dam. We just, unfortunately they didn't have any wind once we got the sail on it to go anywhere, it just, but it floated nice up there, so. This is where this picture is supposed to be, there's, uh, some calculations for a rocket engine. These students made rockets on, uh, and then their own box, their electric launch box. Uh, sometimes it doesn't work.
Come on!
And then you figure out what's wrong and then they can fix it and then sometimes it does work. So they got pretty excited when I went up there. And this is one more, this is, uh, calculations for a beam bridge on the right. And those are pretty, pretty nice clean looking calks. I mean, they're, these are several pages long, that's just one page of it. So then they decide, uh, how big to make their I-beam and then they load it and it's supposed to hold, I think, six or seven people, but it held, it loaded them fine, but sometimes they want it, something to fail, so.
If you all try to huddle towards the center, it might break.
They wanted to try to break it. So there's a picture of a lot of the unique projects that we've done and there's some other ones too, some of them that weren't so successful, but. A blip is also on there and a golf ball launcher and a water turbine on the top left. So that's engineering class and robotics class. Um, we do like one quarter of electricity, electronics. So we use, uh, snap circuits on the top left, which is very easily you can build a circuit real fast uh, without having to search in a breadboard for the correct hole that you're plugging something in or saw or anything. But then we did some real world wiring down on the left, that's when they were replacing some of my cords the other day, that's an old sander. And they go from that and then they, uh, what's on the top middle there is an Arduino microcontroller. And we just went down to, uh, Signum and toured that place and, and he knew all about it, so I need, probably know about it too, so. So they kind of work their way from a very basic circuit up to a microcontroller, up to some robots. There's a little robot that travels around in the bottom center and a robotic arm on the right, then they learn to program those things. And then they get to the second quarter and they've taken that programming, uh, practice and they start doing CNC stuff. So on the top left is a little building machine, it's a very old one, actually it was on rotation when I was here. I don't know if you did, I remember that. But Mr. Roe Wetter bought one at one time and I had a student build our plasma cutter last year. And he did this first and I said, you think I should have your kids use this first before they do that? And he said, absolutely, because you learn basically what it's trying to accomplish before you get to all the nice user friendly stuff like that program on the top right.
Awesome, so the builder machine, they're actually writing in code line by line.
Line by line, every, every, uh, X, Y, Z coordinate that a thing goes on, they have to enter. And you don't do that when you make that one on the top right, you draw a path and it, it kind of follows around. So you understand what the top, what the more advanced things are doing when you, when you do the basics. Uh, bottom left is some of the projects that they've done. There's a, that KSIH thing is a, a stick, a vinyl cutter. We now have a vinyl printer and cutter, so we can print our own stickers and cut them out to whatever shape. Once I get it going, it's not going yet. Bottom right is a laser engraver. And then here's our. Uh, seniors who have done several classes with me and can't fit another one into their schedule because they've taken too many or they don't want to do some other class, I'll work with them and we can do a cooperative learning experience, cooperative educational experience, maybe that's a better, correct term. And they kind of are my assistant. And I give them a big project and they all, they often kind of work on their own. So Cody here on the left, he's the one that started putting a plasma cutter together and he was very, uh, very good at welding. So he helped me teach the group of girls, there's a lot, and I don't know if, maybe one of them had experienced welding, so he was pretty good at helping me do that. Uh, Logan last year, Kessel did it, uh, first and second period, he finished a bunch of boot racks that never got finished the year before for the Taylor School on the left and then he started trying to fix some of my equipment or prep it for use on the right. And he finished the plasma cutter and then he wrote instructions for the kids to use. And then he helped make a project, uh, for a sign in my, in the shop back there. This is something that I'm gonna take a class on here, uh, do some training here in the next couple of months. I did this assistant with kids, what it's intended to be is a work-like experience where, in a, in the CTE field. So kids could have went to Amber Waves and they could have did, worked with an engineer there and I could have did that. Uh, but they wanted to do stuff here, so their job was an unpaid assistantship through me, is kind of how it worked. But what this training I'm gonna do is so that kids. But what this training I'm gonna do is so that kids, not just in tech and engineering, but in any C T E field, will be able to go do that in the community, and I coordinate with the employer um to do some progress checking and stuff. So if kids wanna uh do some welding at Amber Waves, or go out to the health center and be a C N A. I think from my, from my understanding, they'll be able to do that, and I'll just be like a coordinator in between.
And right now, it's been limited only to the engineering, because that's a specialty, so taking the class opens that up to all those areas.
And there's nine, eight or nine different C T areas in the state, so. And then this is one other class I have, it's just a short lunch hour class where they uh pick videos and we watch. You can't really do a lot of project work in in twenty-five minutes, so. They pick their own videos and we watch them, and it's a variety of concepts, so there's just last week, they learned about some of these different concepts up there. Those are all screenshots from the videos we watched, so it's a variety of things that they're interested in. And that's my slideshow, what we do, am I out of time yet?
It's up to you.
It's up to the board.
What are the benefits of doing this here? That's my next thing, and I thought this was gonna be short, but I kept thinking of some things. I'll try to speed through it. I think the program focus, how I focus it, uh, I don't know if mission or vision or whatever those statements are the best, but I use focus, that I try to merge tech and engineering, problem solving stuff with hands-on skills, I think it benefits a lot of kids. More people will go into this than if we would just have a focused tech and engineering only, problem solving stuff. If we only had a welding teacher here, you get more kids in there, and it benefits them too, because they learn different stuff, that's just not specifically what they're interested in. It expands their adaptability in the event of a career change. So if you just learn one trade in high school and then you decide to change your career, you don't have background of problem solving, you're doing different things. I'm currently on career number four, so. Uh, I saw online sources that said people change careers five to seven times. So I think a uh a well-rounded education at this age is is beneficial. Uh, at the strategic planning committee meetings, we talked about uh eleven desired characteristics, well, we talked about desired characteristics of a graduate. We came up with eleven at the beginning, if I remember correctly. And that list included problem solving, critical thinking and technical skills, all of which are paramount to the classes I teach. And when we narrowed it down to five, problem solving and critical thinking got combined into one. So apparently, our community thinks that those two things that which are a focus of tech and engineering are very important for graduates. Um, other benefits, the breadth of the variety of classes we teach, we folk, I I students can take my classes, actually, I have one this year that will get all of these things in one year, you will get introduced in in construction, woodworking, manufacturing, welding, engineering, electronics, robotics, agriculture and medical technology. If you had to focus on on one of those things, it would be so much. Um, one of my goals is personalized learning, I try to maximize student engagement by providing personalized learning options. And all of those junior, senior level classes, there is a a focus of mine to have them do something they're interested in. For example, that engineering design class, there's nineteen different options they can choose for a project. In robotics engineering right now, students are deciding on eleven different CNC or robot projects that they wanna work on, whichever ones they wanna do. The construction class, their woodworking project is completely their, whatever their imagination can come up with. They they have choice when we do manufacturing, when we get to the last month or so, they can, they can do a wire welding project, they can they want, I want them to try stick welding, you know, the ones, some of them don't go so good, but they can get practice in that, they can do oxy settling welding. We can do TIG welding, although I've never done it, uh, they can work on a CNC machine. So there are a lot of options. Uh, the video class, I have a library of six hundred fifty different videos that they can pick their own. And the upper level students can do what I mentioned about the cooperative learning. The other thing about the schedule, all classes fit within our high school schedule. Students don't miss any, any, any classes or it's not scheduled in another manner. A location is, they walk to the other side of the building. They don't even know if they were across the parking lot, like in the middle of the way. So they just walk down there in between bells, they don't have to uh uh commute personally or any school-wise, school organized commute, especially in the winter weather. Uh, opportunity, there are various benefits of the program attract students that may not normally register for the class purely based on the course content, like I mentioned with the those girls that were welding. Accessibility, not only are the facility and equipment accessible during class time, they're also accessible during other times. Uh, students can come during their study all anytime to work on a project or classwork. Uh, last week I had a kid that took the welding class last year, just came down to weld. Um, earlier this year, I did, one student finishes stuff early, so he he uh wanted to fix his toolbox on his truck, so he's this, I'm more than happy to have him come in and use stuff. If they've, if they're trained, have safety, uh, passed a safety test. Um, equipment, we have a huge variety of equipment, we don't have a lot of some things, but we have how do I say it? We don't have one thing with a lot of copies of that, but we got a lot of things with one copy. You can't learn, I've never had a kid that's come in and and been able to do everything we have. So they, there's a lot of things they can choose from. Uh, comprehensive safety program, I think I have in place. I don't wanna jinx myself by saying anything wrong like that. Field trips, we'll go on uh one or two field trips every every semester for each upper level class typically. Um, I get funding from the state uh for C T E specifically, and it's my understanding, we get our school gets funding depending on the enrollment of students in our classes. Um, this semester, I have seventy-four students in my seven different classes, that's an average of ten point six students a class. With average class size of twenty-four, I'm getting almost, almost half of the kids in a class taking an elective C T E class. Um, I got almost everything online. Uh, there's staff experience, as I said, I'm a, I have a lot of experience in problem solving, critical thinking. Um, teaching kids from eighth grade, the same kids eighth grade through senior year, you develop a pretty close personal relationship with most of them. So they get very accustomed to being familiar. And one more benefit is we're a small school, to me, that's a benefit. I've been in, I taught in a school with enrollment of two thousand. And there wasn't the 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 sense of community that there is in a small school. Uh, what do the students think? I, when I was at college, we always had to take a survey, the college made us take a survey, I think, on the professors at the end of the year, so I started doing that several years ago with my kids. It's an anonymous survey that they take at the end of the year, on the back are some results of some of the questions, there's ten questions. I asked them, are you glad you took this class? On a scale from zero, uh, no, to ten, yes. The all classes combined, that's all my students, the average grade is seven point seven eight or average score. And the juniors and senior class, uh, focus classes, it's over eight. How much do you feel like you learned in this class, if you think you learned absolutely nothing, a zero, learned something new already, a pin? Those are the scores there. And how much fun did you have in class? They're both around eight as well. So those, I feel are 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 good, pretty good. So looking at that, that U N D rep that has come to talk about engineering a couple of times, he saw the shop in the back, and even though it was a little messy, he said your kids won't know what they have until they've been gone for five years. And if you look at those scores on the back, I think he's wrong, because I think they know what they already have. Um, there's a little bit on the advisor committee, which I talked about early on, I will send a email to the school board meeting when we get that scheduled. And you are welcome to come, we will get an extra pizza.
Also have some positions to fill in the advisory committee.
Uh, we had to make, to fill your one from last spring, I called two people and they both accepted. So we got two people to fly.
Good, that's great.
So I don't know if anybody's got any questions, but I think that's a lot of things.
Uh, Mr. Advisor, so you started out talking about that somewhat prompted you, and I mean, thanks for this presentation, outstanding, outstanding work. Great programs. Um, was conversation around the Southwest Technical Center?
That was one comment that was mentioned, it was kind of I don't even know what we were talking about at the time, but it just kind of got thrown out there and it surprised me at the time.
Sure.
So I, so that's why.
Strategic planning?
Yeah.
Group, I think it was.
Remember that, it's a common statement.
For for the greater group, help me understand the state funding of current technical, and maybe this is something we need to follow up on. But when you look at that center, there's a ton of money.
It's about fourteen million, I think they spent on.
I believe so, and I I got a pretty exclusive tour in there because we were trying to be wooed as a a corporate sponsor of it. My question is, are we seeing the state lean into those and we're not getting equity for programs at our school, is, are we as a district spending money on the Southwest Technical Center, are we sending money there? And or are we seeing less money at our district level because we have access to, as you pointed out, difficult to get to? Are are we seeing lesser money at our school because of the amount of money being funneled to that?
Well, I'll start and then Russ can add more.
Yeah.
We get funding from the state through the Perkins, it's called Perkins Funding. And we've typically got about eight thousand dollars a year to spend between myself and Mrs. Doorman. And career advising, and career advising isn't usually, they can get a computer or something, but that's about it, but and I have a lot more stuff, so usually I can spend the most of that, but me and Mrs. Doorman try to split it up. That hasn't changed, it's been about the same every year. And the uh, the amount I get back, or we get back for my salary based on the curriculum I teach, that hasn't changed either. So I don't know if you wanna add more to that.
I was gonna say, it depends upon what you mean by losing money. Because, well, if we send kids there, we have to pay.
Okay.
So that's, I mean, and it's a portion of the the student aid. So we still collect their their foundation aid payment, but then we have to pay Southwest C T E for whatever course or whatever they're taking. Uh, we're not going backwards, we're not losing money that way, however, they're spending so much money on those centers that they're not increasing what we have.
Okay.
If that makes sense, so in a sense, we are losing money.
So you can see that.
Yeah.
That that is a valid statement, that this money being funneled to these centers is quite possible.
Perkins grant is eight thousand dollars a year, and it's been that way for the past ten years.
Right.
Well, eight thousand dollars doesn't buy much anymore.
No.
Ten years ago.
Yeah.
And so you kind of did
Yeah.
Almost.
Right, yeah, cuz, yeah, with inflation or not living or whatever.
They're not, they're not increasing funding right.
Right.
So where did the, where did the pressure or the concept or the the mindset at all that that center should service Richardson, where did that come from, what is there?
I think they're just trying to get as many people involved to continue their payment there.
Okay.
So that they continue to fund their programs.
But it wasn't like a state initiative said.
Oh, yeah, no, it was a state initiative for those centers.
Quite was. It was. Okay.
But it it left rural schools out.
And in the state initiative, it was said or implied that this would service
Right.
more schools?
Right.
But yet we're finding that that
Yeah, cuz, I mean, and we're pretty close, I mean, we're twenty miles away.
Yeah.
But still, uh, a person to take one class, they're gonna miss out on two classes here. Because of travel time.
Reaction.
At least.
Yeah, no, it's two class periods and travel.
Yeah.
And just a simple yes or no, with more money, you could do more?
With more space, I could do more.
Okay.
I have trouble figuring out how to spend money on equipment, because I don't have space for more equipment.
The other thing that you talked about is that because of your provisional license, it seems like you said that you're limited. Although you found creative ways to incorporate welding, woods and that. Tell me more about that, why, who says, what says we can't?
My license came, I took a, uh, what was it called, alternative teaching classes or something like that, it was some program they set up for C T E. People with see, experience in a C T E field, welders, whatever, to become a teacher because they have experience, even though they don't have teaching degrees. So I think, I think when I went through the program, when I started, it was fairly new. So I took a couple of college classes that uh teach you how to work with kids, basically, because that's what they assume you don't have, which is probably correct. And then it's through the state C T E. They're the ones that are, that recommend the approval of my license to D P I. To the Department of Public Instruction, the license is math and English teachers.
So your license is through not E S B V, or is it through T S B here?
No, it, it's through there, but it's based on a recommendation from C T E.
From C T E, I see, okay.
So I did, I, the first two years were like a provisional, like you said. One year, and then they see how I'm doing, and if I'm, and if I'm meeting, taking these classes and stuff. After two years, I was able to get a five-year license, now I have a five-year license like every other teacher. It's just like bypasses through the C T E before it gets to E S B V. But it's still a teacher license, if that makes sense.
So what do we, again, so that explains the process, but what, I I see some contradiction here. In the fact that in one area, we're able to certify somebody that you know, usually they say, well, you have to have a degree, and we've even seen that they don't have a degree, or you can import them from another country and they'll be certified, but yet you're being told you're limited in what you can teach?
Uh, the the justification to me at the time is they wouldn't, uh, these are, some of these other classes, like these production classes, didn't have state-approved curriculum. And if I don't have a, if I didn't go through college to become a teacher, I don't know how to set up my own curriculum.
Oh.
That was the justification given to me.
Sure.
The state supervisor at the time, like I said, he was pushing towards everybody trying to be engineers in the tech and engineering department. So he didn't wanna give, this is my uh opinion, he didn't wanna give people license to do some of those other more purely hands-on things. I got a license to teach robotics engineering, there's no state curriculum for robotics engineering, but that one was given to me. I've got, uh, since he retired a couple of years ago, I had another supervisor last year. I think she was there one year, she was very open to doing whatever we felt was appropriate, and I have a new one now, he's in his second year. So far, he's been the exact same way. So I think I may, I asked him about getting licensed for another class called a, like a senior capstone class, which is probably more akin to what my students have been doing, that I've been doing my assistantship. Because, or what I call assistantship, the cooperative working education. Because really, that one was more meant to be probably out of, out of the realm of the school. But what they are doing is very beneficial, because they have a huge, like a capstone project, you had to they gotta put together this big machine and figure out how to make it work or something. So there may be uh, there may be abilities, maybe I could, I haven't looked into it, but to get additional licensing with a new su- new state supervisor. But I know some of those classes, they were trying to get off of the list of approved state classes or whatever you call them.
Yeah, and by approved, it just simply means the state reimburses for them, right?
Uh, not necessarily, that is, or I could get you credit for it, that's what I
Oh.
That is something that's on the state, like
That actually.
That's an actual class, they could get a credit for it.
So they hold two gatekeepers on that, funding and credit.
Right, yeah. And I mean, and I guess what I was told too with the the different classes, uh, there's some egg individuals that go back and they're gonna be the egg teacher in a school, so they can do the welding, they can do the, those other things, but they can't do any engineering. So it's really based on what your past experiences are. And you know, you you have to have so many hours in a certain field to qualify, and so I think that's why some of them, you know, are, yeah, you can't do it, but I think you're doing an awesome job.
Right.
Working around that, that.
So is there a way that, you know, you can show that you have been incorporating this in certain ways, that you can offer it down the road? Like, is that something that?
Like, as I said, I don't know, I haven't, I haven't looked into that. I would assume, since the classes are from the other C T E field, trade and industry, I would have to go through that supervisor and see. And I, I would guess that the short answer would be no, because I don't have hours of professional experience. But I don't know, I've never looked into it.
Sure.
When I, when, when my original supervisor, I told him I was gonna do this, or that's, that's what I wanted to do. He said, well, you, you're not gonna get funded for that, so we didn't get funded for when we do the welding, or when we do the woodworking, we didn't get money for that for my salary. Now we do because we have a new supervisor who's more open to different things.
Awesome.
Nice.
Thank you.
If you got any questions, you can always email me, I'm always long-winded on stuff.
Wow, this has been very
Very educated.
Educated, yeah, I really want to just know.
Not a good one, I mean.
And if you wanna talk to him, he's always at the school. It doesn't matter what time. It doesn't matter what time.
Ten o'clock at night.
Correct.
His hair.
He came back from Dickinson after volleyball was over and it was probably close to nine thirty and your car was parked on the side building and Jenna goes, Jenna goes, does he ever leave? He's the other day, that would have been Monday.
That's cause I was trying to find all these pictures from.
It was tough for us. Well, thank you. For this presentation and certainly what what you did.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thanks, Neil.
I don't, I think I've taught everybody's kids, but yours, Dwayne, I think, maybe your grandkids.
Yeah, they are.
You didn't teach any, no, you didn't teach any of my kids.
Did you?
My kid just said maybe. Well, yeah, let's see, Jake. Let's take a five-minute recess here, guys, we gotta go use the restroom or we'll have a Thanksgiving. Okay, should we get back at it? Oh, now we're only halfway through. Whole business. All right, let's just strategic plan update.
No, oh, we're we're getting the, trying to get the writing team together, get some teachers together and then we'll start on that part shortly.
All right, Taylor Playground, so we've got two quotes.
Yep, I asked them to redo their quotes, Hellman, he had the the rubber.
Mulch.
Mulch, so I asked them to take it off and then I also asked him about the amount of dirt. And he claims that's the amount of dirt we need. Cause that's, it's only ninety yards, he says.
I had a question on the Razor's Edge one, it's, it looks like the deliver and install the hundred and twenty yards on there twice, is that? Right, or? Cause it says deliver and install the hundred and twenty yards of wood chips and then down below, it says deliver and install the hundred and twenty yards of wood chips. So I'm wondering if the quote should be sixteen thousand two hundred dollars less.
Well, it does say the word additional, so is he saying that?
So it's gonna take two hundred and forty yards or?
Right.
Okay, that's where I was confused, I was thinking, I think, and that's if he removes, cause that's right underneath, removing the existing wood chips.
Right, cause. Yes. Correct.
So if he removes the existing, then he would put two hundred and forty yards of wood chips in.
Okay.
That's the way I took it.
Yeah, I was.
Cause he's the one who did recommend to just leave the old and add on top.
Yeah.
And I was like, nope, we're not leaving the old ones there, they're disgusting.
Right.
That was this one, right, that had told you that, and so we both had kinda discussed that and decided that was not a good option.
Right. Right. Well, I don't know, like, your where your swings are, the dirt is actually moved.
Yeah, there's no wood chips.
If we're if we're not gonna fix the dirt, putting wood chips on there, is the water still gonna sit in those holes?
Right.
So.
Okay, that was the only question I had.
So these aren't quotes for the same word, Ben?
As close as possible.
Yeah, is it?
Yeah. I mean, they're they're thinking two different things, the dirt work and grading on Razor's Edge isn't adding a lot of dirt, that's more sculpting. Um, taking the high spots down and using that dirt to build up around the school and. Where Hellman and Sons is more putting the new dirt around the school and using that to funnel the water away.
Cause they're bringing in ninety yards of topsoil.
Right.
There must be.
Well, like Hellman, they don't have any concrete work on there for the basketball court where the the other one does, they're tearing out the concrete and replacing it, it looks like.
Just that one, one section, that one quarter.
He's the basketball court, yeah, that was the high where they have the trip.
Yeah, I just asked him to throw that on there, cause he doesn't, Hellman and Sons, they hired out their concrete, so he didn't put it on there.
So how can there be better part of twenty-five thousand dollars difference than just the mulch price?
That's what I don't understand. Or how they're.
One using oak and the other.
No, no, it's a very specific wood that has to be used for playground chips, so there's only one. Type of wood you can buy for that, so I I'm just guessing Hellman, it's it's figured quite as much.
Okay, fair enough.
I I mean, I, that would kinda be my assumption and then, so if you want with that one, you might have to say, well, you may end up adding. Spending a little extra money for some more mulch if if we come up short.
Alright.
I haven't spent a lot of time studying.
Do we have an opinion on what would be better, doing just addition of the dirt and that, or the sculpting that you're saying remove and? Do we know which one will result in a better?
I, I mean, I don't know either company very well. However, I thought the Razor's Edge was more professional when they came.
I can tell you that they've done work for me and they do a great job.
And they they sounded like they knew what they were doing, yeah.
And you can see on the Hellman and Sons landscape, when they have that retaining wall, I wasn't a huge fan of that, that sounds like child disaster to me. To have a retaining wall coming across the playground there, but when we talked to the Razor's Edge guy, he made it sound like he didn't see why we would need that, it's just a landscaping thing.
Cause if we're removing dirt there, yeah, it would be fine, so.
Yeah, it would be a kind of retaining wall, you know.
When would be the timeframe of doing this work?
If you were talking this spring.
Spring.
Oh, summer, after school, oh.
Summer, spring, summer, yeah. Rainy season, I would say.
Well, we have, you have a preference, Russ?
Like I said, I I felt more comfortable with Razor's Edge.
It also took us a very long time to get in touch with Hellman and Sons the second time. Like, I really, I mean, that was, we had the same quote for months.
That's for red today.
To be that's for red.
Three, I mean, Hellman's short, one of them's got either too much wood mulch or one's short, so.
I'll make motions to walk into Razor's Edge quote for date as determined by administration.
Jake, a motion, a second, any discussions?
Uh, the only thing I'm I'm gonna ask is if we reach out just to make sure two hundred and forty yards is what, and like if we don't, if it all is, you know, if it's too much, are you gonna retract some of that?
Sure.
Bill, that kind of stuff, would be my only suggestion.
I would agree, I'd agree with that too, yeah, but if it's too much, will you reduce the cost because that's. It seems like a lot, yeah, I have to put a pencil to it.
Yeah, two hundred and forty yards.
Any caliber estimating others put there?
It's like a lot. But my other question is, we were applying for grants and stuff, right? And if we were to get them grants, do we wanna look at doing the other, like full math or whatever it's called, baleen rather than wood chips?
When visiting with Dr. Seegler, we can't secure enough funding to cover two hundred thousand dollars worth by spring, like, there's no way that we can.
You wrote the grants and stuff.
Right, enough grants and they're, like, the turnaround time on that is not fast enough, like, the two that we have submitted, we won't hear back till mid-December. So by the time we secure enough of that, it's not really an option. Um, after speaking with Larry Grundall, he's the equipment guy, he kinda said that if you're unsure about it and don't know the route to take, wood chips is the way to go. You can always put in the surfacing later.
Say that we wanna do this now and then, yeah, then we decide in the spring, we've got the funding available, we're gonna go that route anyway, you know? So, but yeah, that's where we're gonna go.
I'll talk to him too about using some of the mulch that's there, I don't know why they can't, you know, use some of that instead of getting a whole new hundred and twenty yards.
Yeah, like, pull that out, what's good, keep it.
Yeah.
Get rid of the rest of things, that is your base and then you don't let it go on top.
Right. Right.
No, literally, it's it's like the community litter box.
Cold, yeah.
Oh, that kinda old, like.
It's.
I don't know why they're all.
Forget it, stop.
Apparently that struck a nerve, you know, if it smells of stinks, I don't know, you know.
Yeah.
And I don't know how far down it goes, so you know, it's never been like truthfully, you know, so maybe the.
That's a good point.
Or more.
It's gross, I would refer to it overall, so whatever you guys think.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose, same side? Okay, motion carries to Razor's Edge. Okay. Should I just get through the superintendent evaluations with all of our screw-ups?
It should be in your, in your folder. I think it should be a link to. Yeah.
Yep. Okay, so is there a quick overview we do before going through these or?
These are all uh consolidated, so it's not individual one. If you. Uh, if you go onto the system, I think, and you can, maybe Jody, as a president, you're the only one, I'm not sure if the others have access. But where it says like thirty-three out of forty or three point four out of four, if you click on that, you can get a a list of who scored what, a breakdown. But this is just a a printing of the consolidated one, so you won't get that.
Where are we supposed to be at? In supporting documents.
Yeah, yeah.
Under the superintendent evaluation?
Yep.
Oh, I see there's a, so, okay.
Yeah.
Across the top here, there's the.
No, it's just who's on it.
Oh, yeah.
It doesn't, like you said, it doesn't break it out into each individual one.
Oh.
Guys, wanna take a few minutes to look through this, it's, this is the first time we're seeing it.
So some of the questions I have, like. There's a comment here under, thanks for looking into the math program, I think we have some work to do here, submitted on November fourth. Yet until tonight, I was unaware that the math program was being looked into. Is there a? Some communication that's going on that's not being sent to the entire board, am I missing it, is it not getting, am I missing them in emails or?
I I made that comment, um, and it just so happened that I had talked to Russ, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
And he was telling me about what's coming up here, we're gonna be talking about math.
So when I put it on the superintendent's report, I think I did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So then is the intent to use the same uh evaluation go-forward basis?
We kinda talked about that at the personnel committee meeting, um, and it kind of was, uh, we we looked at prices, we actually had a presentation from a company that. You know, other places have used and whatever, and um, I think this was what we wanted to use for the timeframe that we had available. Um, but we're gonna look into something a little more. Geared towards what we want versus just kinda generic, pick from these questions type thing.
Right.
I struggled with a lot of the questions because just simply, how do you rate something that we haven't done? Right, and that's kind of what we struggled with too.
Right.
Well, and we we picked these questions, you know, John and I, and Mr. Seegler went through and basically pared down the can evaluation.
Right, yeah.
So we we thinned it out, picked it ones that we felt.
Cause there was way more questions that was on this before that were absolutely irrelevant, I mean, like, you can't even.
Yeah.
Right. And even some of them that are on here, we talked about that, it's tough to judge on, but you gotta have something on there, you know, I mean, there's, there's just no, if you whittled it down to nothing, what's the point? Well, in my experience and what I've taken several classes on some of this, and the most effective evaluation is just a straight board essay. Just just a complete narrative from a supervisor to a report of here's what's going well, here's what's not. I'm not sure if that fits, is there, so we're under the state requirement to have the the superintendent evaluation, right? I don't think there's criteria within the state, right?
No, all it says is the superintendent has to be evaluated on by honor before November fourteenth and then honor before uh March.
And I like the statement you made in one of the last meetings, and I think we all agreed of, the evaluation is for yourself to improve and to.
For growth, yeah.
And, you know, I struggled doing this, you know, we we kinda, I went through it as, pretty quickly, I'll say, but I struggled with this evaluation in terms of. Like I said, you know, especially at this point in time, we had items on there, well, unfortunately, yeah, you gotta score one out of four, cause it simply doesn't happen.
Right.
So how do you say if if one is, if four is exceeds expectations, three is, and it wasn't defined on that, three is, you know, uh, three is at or above expectations, two is below it. And one, because that seemed the way the math worked out, unfortunately, if you haven't done it, it's just a a one. So I guess I'd like the board to at least discuss what is the best method to to go about evaluation? Are we wanting to have a criteria like this where we have a something that is just repetitive and used over and over and you can see growth in that manner? Is it something where we wanna work on a, you know, a way to have a a more narrative, I saw that there wasn't very many comments put in? Well, I think that's kinda what we talked about when on the, our meeting was trying to come up with something that is. More relevant than this.
Okay, yeah.
Um, like I said, we had that presentation, but that seemed to be like it was a, the costs certainly didn't.
It was a marketing point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um. And so I think that, you know, obviously it'll be something that we can continue to work on, but this isn't what we wanna stick with.
Okay.
Yeah, what I agree from the meeting that we've kinda had.
Yeah.
I like having some questions to choose from on the one through four, one through five scale, because otherwise, if you're just writing an essay, your essay is probably gonna be on what just happened in the last month.
Okay.
Versus what happened over the last year, cause your your review in the whole year is actually, right?
Right, yeah.
So your focus is gonna be on the recent activities, whatever's happened, whether good, bad or otherwise, that's what you're gonna focus on if you're just writing a straight essay.
Yeah.
Where I think if you've got some questions to go along with it and in the comment section afterwards, you can elaborate more and it helps you remember other things that have gone on over here.
I I like that the program that John was talking about, because uh it gives the superintendent a chance to show evidence. So it has the question, but then you can submit, you know, that, you can submit the meeting minutes, you can submit agendas, you can show evidence that, yes, I did this.
There you go.
Uh, letters out to the staff or whatever, I could submit submit that as evidence, so then when the board's going through it, they can, you know, say, hey, did he do it? Here's evidence that shows that he did, and then you can have a better feel for it, but I don't think it's worth almost three grand a year to to have that.
There's a way to rule there, you can trip down.
Yeah. But uh, the state, the administrators, I guess, are are looking into that same company, so maybe through the state, we'll get a better deal. If if you know, a lot of schools join it, then maybe we can get a better deal, but I don't know how long that would take either.
We looked at a few different programs too, you know, even the simple ones from the, you know, School Boards Association.
Yeah.
You know, and they all kinda follow this similar format of giving you the different areas that a superintendent is responsible for and then, you know, rating them on that.
Right.
In a way, that guideline's kinda nice, especially for newer board members when you may not know. In a way, that guideline's kind of nice, especially for newer board members, when you may not know everything a superintendent is responsible for. So there's a little bit of guidance in some of that too, you know, and, you know, hitting all the right, hitting all the areas that you should be evaluating on, or that a superintendent should simply be doing. Probably don't know.
No, yeah, that's just it, that's why I like having, go through different departments or different questions, you know, and it tells it all, you know.
And I think, like I said, having that evidence, if we could put it on there, then that would help a lot too.
I just think we should strive to get something that's for our district. And I'll say this, that right now, I feel like we put out an evaluation that's equivalent to a teacher who tested on something that maybe wasn't ever taught. I mean, I, I'm really not comfortable with where we ended up with on the score, I was certainly not comfortable with what I scored. And the fact that I was scoring content that had never even been given the opportunity or really didn't evaluate Mr. Ziegler at all. It might have even evaluated past, the past superintendent and what, what you inherited. And so, I, I don't know, I'm, I think we're at the point where we're at, we gotta submit something, I think tomorrow. But I just think this is a work in progress for sure. You know, to the point of the narrative focusing on the now, that, that's not all bad either. When you get too canned with this, you just get routine, right? And you're just, oh, we went up, once you're at four on everything, then what? Now you have no opportunity to approve, right? So, so the in the moment stuff is okay to.
When you give a four, I, I've given fours, I give a lot of fours. Cause I, I think if a guy's doing a good job, I'll give him a four. That doesn't mean he stops growing. When he, when you get a four, you gotta keep going to keep on getting that four. I think what you gotta remember in evaluation, and for us, it's different than when you're evaluating somebody like an employee where you're with them every day, we're not with them every day. And so it's harder to, for us to evaluate them. So you gotta, you gotta kind of look at what you're, what they're asking and, and I use evaluation as a, as a building tool. And that's, and, and so there shouldn't be anything on this evaluation that he isn't aware of.
But there was.
You know, like, you know, not, I'm just saying in any evaluation, before it comes, before it's written in here, an evaluation, let's say you give him a one or something, but he should be aware of that before it's on here, in my opinion.
Well, I, I agree with you, but I don't think that this evaluation did that, cause there was.
Well, I, I'm just, I'm just saying that, that's the tool it should be used for. Cause if, if you, if we're talking to him and there's an area that he needs to be growing on and it's not improving, then it has to be on the evaluation.
Well, for instance, like this one, superintendent ensures development of job description for district staff and ensures hiring policies, procedures and laws are followed to select and retain qualified employees. I doubt that Mr. Ziegler knew that that was gonna be part of his fall evaluation. Or at some point, he probably would have gone through job descriptions for staff and hiring policies with the board, right? I had to score that a one because we just simply haven't done it, right? So you're, I agree with you doing on that, but I, that's what I mean, is we need to get to a tool that evaluates that Mr. Ziegler is well aware of before that these are the expectations.
My comment was just that when you get to a four, that doesn't mean you stop growing.
Well.
That's what I'm saying, just, you know, I agree with what you're, you know, that part of it. And I, I don't like these, because we're not with him every day.
No, sure.
That's the problem.
Yeah, and so you're supposed to evaluate somebody that you see once a month, maybe twice if you're lucky, you know, and that's tough, so.
So all, so all that being said, we wanna stick with this evaluation for spring semester? So that, you know, Dr. Ziegler knows what's on it and what he should be looking at?
To be fair, we at least should be presenting that within a reasonable time before the evaluation. Of what is on the evaluation and the expectations, right?
Right, so you want to, I mean, so my question is, should we stick with this?
Same question, same everything.
Same question, same exact evaluation for the spring. You know, so you're familiar with it, and Dr. Ziegler's familiar with it, and he knows what.
So in this tool, there was multiple pieces to?
Oh, yeah.
There was.
There's way more.
There was eight pages of questions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Every time you, every time you click down like a number one, then it went to one, A, B, C, D, E, F.
Is this the same one we used prior year?
Yep, we just took a bunch of questions, you know, some was repetitive, some, you know, in a sense, we just. So that, as an evaluator for us board members, you know, you can think a little bit more about each question and not keep thinking, oh, jeez, I got through, you know, fifteen, I got sixty more to go. You know, I mean, so, and, you know, then you have a little time to spend on comments or, or whatever too.
One of the things I would say is good to stick with is the major categories. I liked the, what was picked and chosen for the major categories, I mean, goal and vision setting, board relations, the human resource management, um, community relations. I would even say that I'd like to weight those a little bit of what is the board sees as the most. Cause I mean, a good thing, another thing about an evaluation and it being a tool, it probably should be robust enough that you're probably not gonna get to everything. But if the board can communicate with the superintendent, like, look, you know, human resource management is, are tough, you know. So we'd like to see, you know, if anything legs, maybe it's operational resource management. If the, this, you know, gets a little behind on shampooing the carpets, oh well, you know. But anyway, the, that, those pieces I, I thought were good.
I don't think we changed those, I think we, we keep all the major, we didn't.
The majors we left, yeah.
Yeah, we didn't delete any of the majors.
No.
We just took questions out within that, those categories.
I guess as, you know, the one being evaluated, I would say it would be better for me if we went through it and decided, you know, what, what is expected and, and build a new one for the spring evaluation. Instead of sticking with this, that really, if, if it doesn't mean much, it doesn't mean much. I mean, let's get to something that, that will help.
Yeah.
Which means we gotta start working on it right away.
Right. Who's on my duty again?
I mean, I, I don't, I don't know what the spring will just do, but, you know, if you wanna have it ahead of time, then we need to do it right away.
Well, I think, I think part of it is, cause there is a, I think it's a policy, the superintendent job description. So then you can use that to build, build the evaluation yourself.
Okay, well, are we ready to go through this? What we do is we go each of the major categories and basically board member by board member, I'd say satisfactory or unsatisfactory.
Do we even need to do that, or is that a, a practice that, cause essentially this final scoring is that? In a, in a mathematical telling, am I not, you see?
Actually, if you look through it category by category, um, everyone is satisfactory, right?
Right.
And then so therefore.
Is there a thing that says we have to do that?
I don't know.
No.
No, so this would, yeah, we just make a motion to accept it.
Accepted.
Right.
Basically a make a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Yeah, as it was, I mean, cause yeah, I guess we kind of did already.
Why didn't we come up with that a long time ago? Well, that's why you did.
The business administrator told us we had to do it that way, and I'm pretty sure she was probably right.
There's a lot of finger pointing.
All right, I'll second it.
Who made the?
Dwayne did.
Okay, Dwayne, Dwayne moved to accept the evaluation. As it's printed, second, any more discussion? Evaluation? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Okay, motion carries.
I think, uh, you would have to do that if you were looking at all the individuals and then compiling them. But this did it for you, so then you didn't have to do that.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, lighting quotes?
Okay, I had them, uh, the RT building stayed the same. It's, uh, retrofitting the lights in the gym to LED, the keeping the fixtures, new fixtures in the locker rooms. And that, that quote is forty-nine, sixty-seven, seventy-five. For the school's fifty percent, nine thousand nine thirty-five total. So that was the same as last time.
And, and just to reiterate on that, I know, John, you were concerned about hot spots in the gym or bright spots, and when you looked at the ceiling, but they're just replacing bulb for bulb basically with LEDs, we shouldn't have that.
Yeah, it's not gonna be the circular LEDs that are in Taylor.
The main stars.
Yeah. And then he said every bulb in there is gonna be frosted also, so.
That's better.
Yeah.
That's good.
Okay, all right. So that's the high school one. Taylor had the changes. They said that if we spent the money to put dimmers on everything, we wouldn't get our ten-year payback, which is required for the grant.
Cause the dimmers cost so much.
Right, right. So, uh, they didn't put the dimmers on, but they did replace all the fixtures, except for the gym, cause that's already LED. And keep the switches the way they, so each room would still be, have two switches that you could, you could separate half, yeah. Yeah.
I know, Lindsay, is that acceptable? I know you seem a little concerned about it.
No, I just was concerned with John had said about the brightness. So did we confirm that for that building also that the, cause the gym lights are super bright?
Yeah.
So that was why we had talked about the dimmer when you guys were over there, that if we were gonna have a concern about it, put the dimmers on.
And they can put in, uh, he said, depending upon what we want would be the, the lumens of the bulb. So he could put in lower lumens if we don't want them so bright when they install it.
So would they, with them, are these ones frosted as well?
Yes.
So are the ones that are in the gym frosted?
Currently.
And, and Taylor gym?
I don't know.
No, that's a, that's a super bright.
Right, so would they be dimmer if they're frosted than what the gym is?
It wouldn't be as, I don't know if the light, the lumens might be the same, but it wouldn't be a shock into your eyes.
I think that's the biggest concern at the moment.
So, uh, oh, we got them in here.
Yeah.
So a hundred and seventy of the fixtures in Taylor, which are the ones in the classrooms in their lay-in ceilings, which is the ceiling we have here, a hundred and seventy of them are these two-by-four LED panels. I guess what I see here now is those panels are selectable watt, twenty, thirty, forty, or fifty watt per panel, pre-selected by the, like, by the installer.
Right.
And put in, so you can always pull it up.
So they're gonna be these.
But these, these are.
Dimmable.
Are.
There it goes, it takes in a couple, yeah.
These, this is just dimmable for this one. Where once you, what I'm saying is if you put them in a classroom and said, oh, oh, that's too much for this classroom, at the installation time, you say, nope, reselect it to the thirty watt instead of the fifty watt or whatever for the panel. And then it, you know, would soften it up a little bit.
But these are the same thing that would be going in?
The lights, but not the dimmer.
Right, right, yeah, right.
This, this kind of, this kind of.
Yeah, it has a frosted bulb and then the.
It's really not a, these panels are weird, there's not as much of bulb in these even, it's just that lightened panel. I mean, they're, they're really cool, they're not intense.
Right.
And then you can always switch, your classrooms are all half and half. Turn one side on, turn one side off.
Kelly, Robin, what do you think?
Do you like these lights?
I'm still breathing the loss of a dimmer. I, it depends on the situation. Um, like sometimes you want it higher light, when you're wanting calm, focused work, you want it lower. So a lot of the time right now, I have my classroom on.
How much are dimmer? Did you say how much do it?
No.
I know they gotta pull an extra wire. They gotta pull an extra wire from, you know, basically every fixture has a, pull an extra wire, pull down the switch to make it, to make the dimmer go. It's probably where some of the expenses come from.
Yeah.
I guess. So.
I definitely wouldn't want it bright, bright.
What was that?
I definitely wouldn't want it really bright, just like a normal working light, I don't know how many lumens that is.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
If I'm understanding what you were saying though, Jody, that maybe the, the selectable allows them to go change the brightness with the same fixture that's going to change the switch.
Right, the installer.
So if.
Or probably maintenance.
If you said that's too bright, we can do that. So I guess then the question becomes, is the ability to dim and brighten through different events and that through the day worth in what we'd want to have?
But this price doesn't include the dimmers.
Right, we'd have to go back to that piece. Well, then we wouldn't even get the grant.
We wouldn't, we probably wouldn't get the grant.
If you did it.
If you did the dimmers.
On your own.
Well, if we did it on our own, then they don't know about it.
That's what I would do, I mean, if that, if it's too bright down the road, we'll put dimmers in.
Okay.
We'll fix it all like that.
Yeah, I mean, without a doubt, it's a hassle to go pull them out.
As long as what Jody are saying that these can be, cause we're not gonna know.
Right.
Like, I'm not gonna know if a fifty watt or whatever the lumin, I'm not gonna know that until they're in the space with the new carpet and the new ceiling tile, and then I'm, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So I'm not, we're not gonna be able to say that right now.
No, but Ross, uh, it's just the switch up on the fixture. So Ross could even go up, and if it's too bright, he could turn it down a notch and see what happens. I don't even think you change the bulbs, it's just the amount of wattage going through the bulb.
Yeah, these new LEDs, it's just a click, click, click.
Yeah, it's crazy, they got.
Yeah, so.
Switches on these bulbs right, so.
But I'm okay with that, what you said.
You can always install dimmers, I mean, you can always do that down the road, I mean, if it's, it's too bright. Don't die. Do they use them in the school over here, they use the dimmer?
They use dimmers a lot.
I know, but that bugs me, cause I go in a room and it's like, why is it so dark in here?
But you know, you go in your room and it's either on or off, there's no dimming.
Exactly.
Well, it's either, it's dark, but the teachers use the dimmers a lot, they do, and especially at different times of the day, like, um, afternoon, when it's harder for students to focus, there's a lot more dim lights on the, in the building.
Yeah.
Let's get the grant, we'll put the dimmers in ourselves. Along with this work, I, I mean, we can, we can vote on this, but maybe before we do, let's, uh, describe the other work we're looking at too, we're looking at carpet. Oh, that's further down the line.
Yep, it's further down there, and then the ceiling tiles.
Oh, sorry, okay. All right, while we're looking at other work there, so, okay.
Make a motion to accept both proposals for lighting.
Okay.
I second.
Got a second, John, any more discussion on that?
Do you have a timeline on he was gonna be able to do it?
They actually wanna get it done before school's out, because their summer is pretty much full.
He's able to work around class schedules.
He said they would come in and start when class was out and then work till ten, eleven at night until they.
Mr. Frank, is it all right with that?
What's that?
Says Mr. Frank.
Well, the good part about that is, is you could see a classroom, John, go turn the lights on and say, nope, too bright, let's dim them. Let's notch it down.
Yep, yep.
More discussion, questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. All right, new business. We got teacher retirements.
Sad day, uh, had two individuals bring me their resignation letters for their retirements today. Mrs. Messer and Ms. Grass. So we knew they were coming, it's just they're staples of the district, it's, they've been here a long time. So, and both gonna be hard to fill positions. Not just because of who choose the new person will be stepping in, but just, yeah.
Top spots.
Yeah.
Now that would be end of school year?
Yes, end of school year, yep.
Yep.
Yeah, it's accepted.
They both stay longer than they had to.
I tried to talk both, but one more year, just one more year.
Yeah, just one more year.
Are they aware of the teacher retiree hire program?
They are.
They are, actually, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and um actually, Miss Gress said that she'd be interested if we do find someone that needs membership or supervision to come back and do that.
Yeah.
That's nice.
And they both had any letters and left, so we didn't have to sit and cry, which I very much appreciated.
Okay, and then you have a resignation.
Red uh uh Coach Martin resigned as head football coach. So we are looking for a head football coach, I talked to Myron in Hebron and. He said he can't think of anybody over in Hebron, so. If you know of anybody who may be interested, we do have a couple people that might be, but we haven't had a definite, yeah.
I'm gonna start advertising and recruiting.
Yeah, I talked to Troy about Mrs. Messer's spot. And he suggested we wait until after the college semester and then open it up right away at end of December, beginning of January for her position.
Why, why wait?
I.
I agree, why not just?
Yeah, we could do it right away.
Just me, just some.
Because the student, the students are going to be looking, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't have a little bit longer.
Um I would even entertain the motion or a like discussion around early hiring of that position especially. And perhaps the other if we find, or where are we at on uh? It seems, I don't see very many student teachers through our district, is that a?
We there aren't any, well, I should say any, there's very few teachers go into education programs.
Sure.
So we always used to have three or four every year from Dickinson.
Well, that's kinda scary.
But they're not, they're not graduating anymore.
You and Diaz looking for an overflow though, to send them out farther, so we did get an email where we could put in what we're looking or who could supervise and mentor.
So.
So I did put a whole bunch of positions on there, but our teachers also need to be qualified to host a student teacher, so that's, I mean.
Right, yeah, that's a, I get it.
It's one course.
We have any right now? I think we have, no, I mean, to supervise, that is qualified to supervise, like depending where they're going to college at.
Her chance?
Yeah.
In Taylor last year, I was the only one that was able to supervise, so right now I think we have none.
None.
Depending what college they go through, like Mrs. Max can do it, because she's going through one of the out of state universities, so it worked for her, but usually that's not how it works.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think we should advertise and if if we find someone interested soon, I'd even. Consider an early. Position, just to help with that transition, certainly been something we struggled with.
Troy actually brought up the idea that if we could get someone earlier, that should be discussed if we could. Hire them for the last quarter under Mrs. Messer.
Mm-hmm.
To get trained for at least a quarter or more.
I'd say even sem- semester, depending upon if we can.
Yeah, possibly, yeah. That's for you guys.
Okay, any more discussion on that?
Make a motion to advertise. Uh both positions as is.
You have to advertise all three.
All three, maybe all three.
Yeah.
I know, you wouldn't.
Do we even need a motion on that?
I don't.
Do you need on the football?
I don't know, is that?
No, I mean, on everything, or that just something.
Yeah, yeah, you wouldn't need a motion on that.
Take care of it, for recommendation.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, alright, bus bid opening, or opening four bids, you're saying?
Yeah, we have one bid. And uh. They asked if they could do it. By email, because they wouldn't be able to get it in on time without. So I said yes, and I haven't opened them yet, so here they are. Isn't that something?
Is it, it's down here, Google.
Oh, okay. This is the forty-seven capacity. From Hartley's, they have an office in rugby.
How many pages of specs do we get?
Just seven, this.
Seven.
At least there was a price on this one, most likely.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm looking for.
It was a one twenty-five.
Was it?
Yeah, one twenty-five.
Yeah, one twenty-five. And that's a forty-seven passenger diesel, I assume.
Yes, I requested diesel for that one. Or does it say? Cummins six point seven.
We want a bus that big, and that we were looking little buses.
Well.
What a transformation.
We started looking at our um. Current inventory.
Yep.
And if we got on a rotation, did they say how long this one will take?
Uh let me go back.
If we got on a rotation of of replacing um the ones that need to be replaced, it replaced every year. You know, if we did one this year, one next year, well, a lot of them are two, a year and a half, two years out. So we'd already be, so we'd be falling behind on, so we were, we're actually looking at two.
Gotcha. Okay.
No, they didn't, on this one. The fourteen passenger, they have one in stock.
Okay.
That's this one here, yeah, one in stock unit available, hundred and ten thousand.
That's a gas one.
A gas.
And these guys are on a rugby?
There's an office in rugby.
John, fill us in more on what we need, what what you guys got through?
Well, so originally, we kinda talked about like a suburban or whatever, and then when we looked at the numbers um on. Potential, not necessarily kids that are riding, but if everybody did wanna ride, we wouldn't have enough room in a suburban.
Okay.
So um when we looked at it, it was the fourteen pa- one of the fourteen passengers was the first one that needs to be done. And then the forty-seven passenger would be the second one that would need to be done. In the rotation of replacing them over the course of every year or every other year, um we looked at miles, we looked at year. Um condition of the bus, all those, I mean, we factored in a lot of different things. And so when we decided it was, well, and it would, if the other one is in order out, that this would work out where it would be one this year, one next year, but anyway. And then, you know, replace those as needed, like I said, whether it's every year or every other year, but we have it, we had it written down. On what we thought the schedule would look like, on which ones we would replace. Through the, basically the entire fleet to a degree, until we got to some of the newer ones and, you know, wait unconditioned and that kinda stuff as time goes on.
So right now, you guys' recommendation is replace that?
Well, the first, the first would be the fourteen, and then.
Fourteen.
That bus is like.
Yeah, but it, so that one seems like it's available, so we can do that one now if we decided to. And then assuming that the forty-seven passenger is in order out, then that one would come in, usually it's like a year, year and a half lead time. So it could be not even next school year, the school year after.
On the suburban talk, do we have a field for if we were to go suburban routes? Would we see more participation in applicants to do bus driving and be able to split routes?
The other thing to keep in mind, you have to do child seats for a lot of them.
Sure.
Um which you don't on a bus.
Okay.
Um. And then, you know, we, your longevity on these is probably gonna be longer than on a suburban. Now, a suburban is gonna be roughly half to two thirds the price of.
So in the end, you're saying cost is neutral?
This is gonna be, I think it's, it is, I think really in reality, it's gonna be about a horse and a beast.
But do we feel like we would have better chances of getting bus drivers with suburban routes?
I don't know if you would. I don't think so, because you you need a regular license to drive this too, you don't need a special one.
Okay.
Because no matter what you drive, this that the school owns, you still have to go through the annual training, yeah.
The warranty, yeah, yeah. I just thought I'd ask you.
And then apparently, we can't do like fourteen passenger vans anymore.
Okay.
Because I I had talked about that and reached out to a couple people, uh but I guess a few years ago, there was accidents and they were rolling over and doing whatever, so they said that they can't do this anymore.
You do that's a very, but not a van?
Correct.
I treat them different. So our options for the fourteen, we had this one, then there was that one in Bismarck was in stock, or is that one gone now? Wesley's had one, didn't they?
They had one coming up, I think it was.
Yeah, it wasn't in stock.
That one wasn't in stock.
No, it was gonna be built in January.
Okay, and then there was a two down in Indiana, Oklahoma.
Right. Oklahoma, yeah.
But our our process here, though, I think is we advertise for bids.
Right.
And and then and this is what we receive for bids, like, can you go outside, I mean, you can reject all bids.
Right. Right, right.
Or pick one of these.
Right, right.
But you can't pick outside, if someone didn't bid, you can't do that, can you?
No, you would, you would have to.
You have to reject them all and then solicit more bids.
Right, right.
So like this email here, you open up bids just for Feltland, and this is what we got, is just this one?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so this, this is a. I'm gonna bid over.
And the problem, the problem we have with the bids is our location really, because we're supposed to put it in on the. The our designated paper, which comes out once every two weeks. And it's supposed to be out, the bid is supposed to be out for ten days, but when you have a paper that comes out once every two weeks, sticks to press. Comes out what, only on Wednesdays, once a week, but then they have the online, and so it's so hard to. It was a short turnaround, I guess.
And I, but you can, but you can go on and solicit, so you you get a hold of companies and say, hey.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and that's what I I called them and I called Harlow's and, yeah, 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 yeah.
Just made us open.
Oh, you did. Alright. But if that that paper thing, I know at the beginning of the year, I talked about that, like, love what Richard Dimmers does, but that timing thing and post, you know, be means and that.
Yeah.
I think we've got some separate discussion about that.
But I think the the ones that you had gotten from the Oklahoma one was a little bit cheaper, not significantly, but then it would cost deliver, so I think at the end, you're about washing it.
Well, it was missing a lot of the northern group.
Well, and I think it was actually, wasn't it one fifteen?
I was thinking it was one twenty, and I was one twenty and one thirty.
One twenty. I think you were decent. So this one is is the cheapest one we've seen, at one ten.
Yeah, this one is the cheapest.
Oh, one ten, well, I was, I was thinking one twenty, was the other one one twenty?
Oh, then that's why. The big one is one twenty-five, yeah.
Okay, I had one twenty-five in my head for now, I guess.
See, I think this is the cheapest one we've seen for the fourteen passenger.
And this is delivered. You know, they're not adding tacking on extra miles or anything like that, so.
It's in stock and it's delivered.
Right.
Then it has a core heater, probably.
For the shape that we're repl- the bus that we're replacing, I really think we should jump on this one, because that bus is bad.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
We say yes today, we got it next week, then?
What's that?
I have to ask them, I don't, yeah.
We got the funds available to to cover it.
Probably, probably, I mean, I don't know for sure, but it probably isn't gonna be available there.
Oh, probably not, right.
I'll make a motion to accept the Hartley's, yeah, for fourteen passenger.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second on the fourteen passenger bus, discussion on that?
I I have a question. Just for us, are we gonna try and get a low interest loan for it, or are we gonna use savings dollars?
I, I think we should pay for it.
I think we should pay for it, yeah.
Okay, is it, I don't, the way interest rates are right now, you're gonna be in the sixes, I'm guessing.
Probably.
And so you're not even gonna, like, having the money in the CD at that point doesn't make any sense, you know what I mean?
Right.
That's why I asked that report.
Yeah.
We have this money, I mean, there's no sense in storing up great money.
Yeah, and then do we wanna, I mean, not in this motion, but do we wanna act on them?
You gotta finish this first.
The bus.
Yep. So this would be the first motion and second.
Yeah, 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 just. More discussion, more questions on this? Fourteen passenger bus is is a gas, it's it's yellow, meets everything you need. Okay, there's no more questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, okay, motion carries.
Uh the one I, what I'd like to know about the forty-seven passenger is when their, what their lead time is on that?
Promise date, June twelfth, twenty-five.
So we'd have.
So it'd be this June, this coming June.
Because originally, we were thinking every other year, that's why we.
Can you be done for the next year?
I don't, I, so.
It's a need, uh the need's there.
Yeah.
Because that one.
Well, price wise, it says a hundred and twenty-five pre-trade, we could try and trade two in on.
Wasn't one of the goals to keep one as a spare though, would we have a spare if you traded two of them that we have?
Yeah, two is the spare.
Okay.
So if we traded that on a bus, then whatever bus this one is replacing would become the spare.
It's still a spare, you're gonna be giving two buses, or number two, not two buses?
Right, yeah, number two.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got confused there.
Yeah, sorry, number two.
Okay.
So that little bus, we're still trying to sell, I mean, you're not gonna get much more of that.
Right, yeah.
I mean, it's, it is done. I think that was Glenn Delux's bus, right?
It probably.
It's been good, but it has a hundred miles on it.
Hundred miles on it, I don't know.
Hit number is.
Two hundred something.
Well, if they're saying it's a need, I doubt these are gonna get any cheaper.
I was thinking two.
I guess I'd make a motion that we go ahead with this second bus also, try to trade it in.
I think so.
Yeah, get rid of it.
Because that wasn't the one we were gonna keep as a spare. Right?
Yeah, that's what.
No, that would go on a route and then what, uh I can't remember what number it was, would become our spare.
Right, I I have, the stuff I wrote down is in here, but I have the.
So which question?
Two.
Two, second, that is.
Motion. Forty-seven. Yeah, a motion and a second, more discussion on this. So them recovered for the next two years or any weekend.
Right.
Then you wouldn't have to replace the bus until.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Or is it twenty-seven, twenty-eight, for you to go every other.
So next year would be twenty-five.
Were you gonna skip a year between buying buses, or what was the, what was the plan?
Well, we were gonna go every, we were gonna look at every year, but we were gonna order two, if we had to order out, we were gonna order two this year.
Okay.
And then we were gonna look at the condition, so our first bus number was gonna be bus number four, which should be the forty-seven passenger.
Bus four is a fourteen passenger.
Or fourteen passenger, excuse me, the second one was gonna be bus nine, the forty-seven passenger.
Right.
But bus two. Would, I thought you said was in worse shape than bus nine.
Yeah.
And so we were gonna keep bus nine and get rid of bus two.
And trade bus two, yeah.
Yeah.
So that would take you to twenty-six, twenty-seven. Because twenty-five, twenty-six is.
Unless, now I can't remember, was it bus nine that has air brakes? It might be better to trade in the one with air brakes, so we, because that would help with drivers.
Yeah.
Bus nine is a brake liner, so probably does have air brakes in it. That's bus nine is the freightliner.
Yeah.
That's probably the only air brakes in it could be. It's IC International.
You said bus two was in rough shape.
It, it's old, I mean.
Yeah, it's a two thousand seven.
It's only one year older than nine.
If you.
Bus, yeah.
It stinks when it runs. You can smell the diesel.
Inside.
No.
Won't meet make California.
Is the, does the forty seven passenger on the bid, does that have air brakes?
No.
No.
I requested no air brakes, yeah.
And then would it be maybe the intention, so bus eight is the one activity bus right now, it's only a twenty five thousand miles on it.
Right.
Five years old, does that one go into the rotation of those two forty seven, same?
We talked about that too, of possibly doing that way.
Yeah, take the, just wanna put some miles on it, let me want to be a reserve bus.
Right.
Just thoughts, I guess.
The bad thing is you don't want buses just sitting either.
Well, the activity buses, they still get used. Yeah, they get used a couple times a week anyways, that, like, they're sitting all the time, right?
Yeah, cause his bus, bus eight doesn't have air brakes, does it?
No.
The only, so the only bus that we have is nine that has air brakes.
And blue.
Well, yeah, yeah.
And the coach, yeah. And we only have, I think, three drivers that can have air brakes.
Right.
Okay, are you comfortable with this? Any more discussion?
I think we're just continuing to try to talk ourselves into it, so.
Okay, motion is to uh, accept the bid on the forty seven passenger bus, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carried, we're gonna have some new buses in the fleet.
Okay.
And we go to Carpet, Taylor Carpet, quote.
I didn't expect that to be this high. So it puts us over the threshold, so we're gonna have to bid it out.
There's nothing wrong with that either, there's probably companies out of Bismarck.
Right, right.
I'm gonna take, make sure if they're removing that floor, that they know what's below it.
Right, and I'm still, BJ had the asbestos report for here, but I'm not sure if Taylor is included in the same binder, so I have to go through that.
I have, there's one in Taylor also.
I thought we couldn't find it.
I told you I found it.
Okay.
So basically, that just needs to get sent out to bits.
I don't remember the year on it, but it was less than a one percent. And it was down in the boiler room somewhere.
Yeah, that's right.
But I don't remember what the year on it is.
Pipe coverings, it didn't mention the tiles.
But we should look at it more closely. And Dave, I think you had said.
Yeah, the twelve by twelve shouldn't be asbestos tiles.
Yeah, the size of the tiling.
You don't think it is?
Nine by nines were all the asbestos tiles, there are only nine by nines, a twelve by twelve shouldn't be.
I don't wanna know why you know that.
You know.
But I do think, I mean, you could just essentially go over the top, I gotta remember.
As long as you don't deserve it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it just is after ripping the old stuff out.
Yeah, deserve it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that tile will come along.
It is, yeah.
And that more red carpet is tough stuff.
Cement in underneath, there is no tile in second grade.
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering, the classroom probably doesn't have tile.
At least both of them.
The only ones will be downstairs, and I don't remember if those were twelve by twelve or nine by nine.
Those are bigger ones.
Yeah.
The only nine by nines were in the stage area.
Hallway, yeah, and one hallway, is it the lower hallway, I think, still has the nine by nine?
How many rooms are we talking?
It's just cause they're nine by nine, don't think they're asbestos either, it's just a possibility.
I'd have to count them, I told him when he was there, I think he said fourteen.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's counting staff room, office space.
Computer lab.
I'd have to recount, I can sort of.
That's okay, that's okay.
But I think it was fourteen.
You know, how many have red in them?
Two minutes.
Five or six, I think.
All of the upstairs except preschool, and the library must have been done more recently, cause that's. That was on the carpet choices, I asked them, I said, wanted it back, and they didn't.
No, I'm saying why they put it in there.
Where they originally put it in.
Yeah, I I thought two reds.
It's some good stuff too, that carpet's.
Maybe, but.
Stuff on the eyes and the brain also.
About ten thousand five hundred square feet. In according to this bid.
Put it all in bids, let's get it done.
Yeah.
You wanna say that out loud?
Okay.
Let's see, let's all sort somebody.
Keep moving here, um, Mr. Paulson requested this next item, school board evaluation, possible public comment during meetings and possible meeting room.
Yeah.
So go ahead.
Yeah, the, you know, recent conference with the School Board Association, a few things that we covered, I thought I'd bring to the board. One of them, the first, we were given a presentation under open records and open meetings for school boards. This was given to us by a representative from the Attorney General's Office. You know, the, in general, the the message I took away from it is, it seems like there's always, there's a lot of do this, out shell, don't do that. Most of that is probably from case law and and problems that happen. But in general, the intent, if you look at what open records and open meetings are, is just that, have a meeting that is open, that feels open. You know, you're you're trying to be sure that public knows that they're welcome and that the meeting is welcoming. One of the things that was resounding to me that I think we should consider is access to meetings. One of the slides stated that if a meeting is held in person, the meeting room must be accessible to, and the size of the room must accommodate the number of persons reasonably expected to attend the meeting. Um, I would question whether where we hold our meetings right now fits that, you know, I'd like to have some discussion. But I think that we could reasonably expect, I mean, no tonight, it got a little bit crowded in here, I would say that this meeting room is not necessarily open. You know, we sit here around a table with almost our backs to anybody from the public that shows up. It's it's pretty decent for the recording, from what I've seen in here, so that's certainly something to consider in this. But I'd like the board to take a look at that and think about access to this. Well, I know that.
I can tell you that I'm on year four now, and until the uh, staff at Taylor started coming, we had zero people come to these meetings.
Sure.
Not a single one.
And and I get that, now you should ask yourself, or why?
Oh, no, I take that back, we did have uh, one gentleman came quite a few times, I guess, so there was a lot.
So you know, you you look at, might wanna ask yourself why on that, um, you know, and maybe some of it is that. Does the public feel welcome here? When you look at the video hits, we had one, one time that had over three thousand views on the videos. So why do we have that many views? Three thousand views, guys, that's three times the number of people that have voted in the last school board general election. So anyway, I'd I'd like us to consider those kind of things in the meeting room, um, you know, and it just simply said, said also on the slide, if the meeting is held by electronic means, the electronic capacity must accommodate the number of persons reasonably expected to attend the meeting. I'd hope that we wouldn't think reasonably expected would be zero. Right? You know, you look at a lot of other boards and look at the recordings, the board sits kinda as a body in front, there's usually seating for the public. You know, there's there's time, that that was the second one that was interesting to me, was that the board itself can decide, but should decide and should not leave it just open, we should act on several things, and one of them regarding the opens meetings is public comment and public comment period. Uh, staff comments, staff comment period. We should at least go through the discussion of what we want for pub- public comment. We can set the rules within confines of what's fit with 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 general accepted practices and and law. But we should address that, and we should include that in our information of what we put out to the public. Whether that be that we allow public comment if, you know, someone submits in advance that they want it, public comment for X amount of time. Uh, but I think it's something that the board should should take a look at and and discuss what our public comment processes are. I've had some feedback from some people, statements like, well, I don't know if I should come, I don't even know if I can talk. I feel I feel like I have to interrupt to be able to 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 give information. We should, we should address that kind of thing. Um, I feel like I'm not welcome, cause there's no place for me to sit, we, I've I've had some of those comments. I guess that that in general is is uh, the section that I'd like to say about open meetings, there was a lot of the content, but I think if we start there, we could get somewhere with uh, improving our our meetings as far as being open. The other area that I thought I'd bring up was a school board evaluation. Uh, we had a presentation on, um, they, it was very short, especially for the the content. Uh, the Center for Public Education, and I mean, all asterisks with the fact that I'm I'm never a big fan of anything that's bureaucracy divvied down. This one here seemed interesting, it had, uh, it was titled Eight Characteristics of Effective School Boards. Granted, of the eight things they brought up, some of them probably don't apply well to a board in in a district like ours, certainly, we know that. Or statistically, probably not one of the the districts where a lot of these practices fits as far as just our size and that. But I thought it was interesting, most of the content of this, again, the presentation was pretty, pretty short. And the fact that, you know, we weren't given this in advance, and you know, that this alone was was significant reading to look into. But they also gave out this uh, this piece where it's a a school board self-evaluation. I think it's something, you know, we we just went through Dr. Ziegler's evaluation, I think it's something we should consider, is taking a look at what a self-evaluation of our board would look like. Um, I think the evaluation would help drive improvements, um, but anyway, I guess I guess for this meeting, I just thought I'd bring up the points and and entertain the idea that if the board would like to, I don't know, get together on a on a retreat or some sort of method of discussing some of these kind of policies. Again, certainly that has to be open. You know, regular board meeting time is is probably challenging to to insert all this, you know, meetings get long. But those two were were two that I thought that I got out of the conference that I wanted to bring to board and and discuss, if we wanted to entertain either one. And I know you were you were at both of those, did you have any comments?
I mean, do we have any other rooms in the building here or anywhere that would work with the IT capabilities to still be streaming it and doing everything that we're doing now?
I think the only other time we've been in a different room was in the music room.
We used the music room one time, but so on a meeting where you, I mean, we've had meetings where we anticipate a bigger crowd, and then we have to move to different rooms. You know, and that's still certainly an option. You know, yeah, you anticipate a controversial topic and, you know, set up, we set up a bigger room, you know, that's that's certainly easy to do. I will tell you that this room is a huge improvement over what we used to sit in. In the old school, I mean, you know, that was basically an extension of the superintendent's office, and we put guests in there, and we always had teacher presentations. Which, by the way, I I like, or maybe that's something I wanna think about adding to board meetings, but, um, so this is a nice improvement and, you know, thought, oh, designed in a nice, nice room here. My opinion on that would be, I mean, before we go to a bigger room, um, maybe we could just get some nice guest chairs and and lines, I mean, you could, we got eight people in here tonight. And I don't think that was unreasonable by any means or or crowded, if you had, you know, like, you know, like a good waiting room chair, you know, something a little step up from that. But put some nice chairs around, maybe maybe we wanna shift this table a little bit this way and until we start overflowing this room, I don't know if we need to switch unless we know someone's gonna gonna cause controversy. And that's my opinion.
And as far as the public comment, was the public ever instructed they can't comment, or do you wanna just add a spot to the agenda where they can't?
The point is this, is is left to, left undetermined is just that, you have it defined. We certainly should as a board define several things, a lot of things, there's a long list. This one was one that I thought, because of other comments I've, you know, comments I've gotten from the public was something I thought we should address. There's a long list of things that a board like ours should address, that as far I'm aware, you know, now Mr. Ziegler told me that he's he's working on digging up policies, procedures, protocols. What we have, what's available online is the basic, you know, non-discriminatory policy, is the can downloaded from a, you know. But policies around things like, like, we brought it before, delegation of authority. As far as I know, this board has never delegated what authority of spend our superintendent has, and and laid out those definitions. But anyway, so we certainly could work through, and and I'm not suggesting, you know, never, would we probably work through everything that is presented. Uh, but but those topics that we know are something that should be, that that are that our stakeholders are interested in. You know, hearing comments like that, like, I don't even know if I should come, because I don't know if I get to speak, well, we gotta address that.
On the topic of, you know, like, this board has never said how much a superintendent can spend, but how do we know boards before us have it? You know, what's our?
It it doesn't matter if it's not in, uh, it should be readily available in a policy book.
It should be in a policy book. It'd be in a policy book, or would it, or do you have to dig through minutes? I mean, is every, cause every motion doesn't go into a policy book.
No.
You you know, and every two.
You'd have to look through the minutes of.
But how do you?
Well, this is a simple, Mr. Ziegler, you know what your delegation of authority is? Oh, there you go, there's your answer.
I go by ten thousand.
Right.
Which interestingly enough is more than I have, is I have a five thousand dollar delegation of authority, and I work for a forty billion dollar oil company. So I'd be uncomfortable with ten thousand.
But how much does the CEO of your company, how much can he spend?
Uh, I don't even know.
I mean, and essentially, our superintendent is the CEO of this this school.
But forty billion versus six million is a significant.
I I don't, I don't, but if it's, I mean.
And I've also seen inconsistencies in our practices of what the superintendent allows and then what will be brought to board. So a- anyway, in the end, this stuff should be defined.
And define, like I said, always in a policy book, or, you know, like I said, or our minutes, I mean, if if you dug back, you know, ten, twenty years, would you find it in minutes somewhere? It just never ended up in a policy book?
I think what what I've been told anyway is lawyers are telling you, uh, if it's not a policy anyway, it's what what you've done previously, what's your past practice? And and that's what they're gonna tell you to go by, whatever your past.
So I think the only way you could really do that is just like we do with dues and fees. How much we charge at the gate for admission, how much, and we we review that annually, that's the only way you can do it.
Sure.
Because you can't, you can't do it, well, this was in the minutes twenty years ago, well, twenty years ago, gas was seventy nine cents a gallon.
So five thousand dollars is is comparable to five thousand.
Yeah, so so I think that, um, I I like the idea, um, but it's something I think that you would have to do annually, like you do with your gate fees and your, how much your season passes cost and how much the gym membership is, and it would have to, and you'd have to do it that way, there's no other way to do it. On an annual basis, and it wouldn't take very long, once you get it all figured out, you would just do like we do now, and say, yep, looks good, we'll carry it over to next year. Or do you feel like this isn't enough for that you're bringing too much, you know, whatever that discussion looks like, um, but that's the way you'd have to do it.
Sure.
Now, you can't put it in a procedure, you can't put it in a, anything like that, it would have to be annually reviewed.
Yeah.
In order to make it even worth doing.
Understand the reason for that is that at some point, everybody around this table would say, hey, look, that's too much for the superintendent to just decide by themselves, right? I don't know if it's five thousand, ten thousand, fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty, but at some point, you're gonna get to that. But if we haven't defined that, and the superintendent does spend a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, you have nowhere to stand. You never have said no, right, so then at that point, you haven't accomplished. So the the fact that the statement is saying, well, look, it it hasn't been defined, it's just assumed, no, it is incumbent upon us to to set these policies, right? And it should be, you know, to the point, whatever we come and vote, vote, what a what a dollar amount should be. But anyway, I think that, you know, you eat an elephant one bite at a time, and the the things I'm bringing to the board tonight is a couple that I think is something we should take action on.
I'll comment on, David, having retreat would be a great idea, we did it years ago, and they were good, and then we just quit doing them.
I like that idea too.
Uh, it that that is a great idea, but it's hard to put together.
Oh, it's like. Trying to get everybody in a day.
Trying to get it put together, and then then you get it.
Do you do that as a?
Open, open, open.
Yeah, we had some open meeting.
Well, what it is, since she said that they do two meetings and.
No, well, they do a workshop for an hour before.
Before.
But it's open to the public, if anyone wants to come. But it's open to the public, if anybody wants to come, they just call it a workshop, and they don't make any motions or vote on anything, they just discuss the topic.
Well, really, even a retreat has to be open.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
Open, but but yeah, exactly that, you say, we're not gonna, we're not discussing.
There's no, there's no motions.
There's no motions.
Anything like that.
You can discuss, you can discuss anything, there's just no motions.
You just discuss things like this, right?
That is a great idea.
Yeah, I think just do.
Yeah, that's something I've, we talked about doing it in the last five years, and we never got it done.
Yeah.
And but it it would be good. There's no doubt. And as far as people coming to these board meetings, I've been, I've never, ever, ever heard anybody being stopped from talking. We've always allowed people, there's a lot of boards that won't allow it, I mean, they just, it's a business meeting, and you gotta be on the agenda, and they don't let you talk. We've always, people come, we've asked if they have something to comment, never, ever have anybody been shut down.
And if that's our policy, it should just be stated.
Yeah.
It should just be in minutes somewhere and stated that, just look, we have an open policy to the point of if public has a comment on a topic being discussed, they can, whatever it be, if we go to the first grade, raise my hand, whatever.
Usually, if they dress up, is when they come right in, you know, is there something you got to, and we let them talk. We may not act on it, we more than likely won't act on it.
Sure.
But you allow them to talk.
Yeah.
They're patrons of the district, yeah, let them.
Yeah, if they bring up something completely off the agenda, you almost can't act on it.
You won't act on it, but you listen to them.
And maybe it goes on the next agenda, that's something that is best.
Well, you at least allow your superintendent principals that to check out what's going on, you know, what what is following.
Right. I would just challenge that we 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 set that policy then.
So, if somebody feels that they can't come.
The downside about a completely open like that is if, again, if you've never defined it, then people are left not knowing. That one's a difficult one to communicate, yeah, come on in and speak your mind, as compared to, look, if you had wanna address the board, let the superintendent know in advance. It does, it is more inviting to that intent of having an open meeting, inviting that is,
and I will, and I will say that I don't know where this came from, and these guys can vouch this. As a past employee not sitting around the table, that was the vibe I always felt, like, you don't talk unless you're spoken to. And so I don't know where that came from or why.
From who?
Kelly.
Okay.
He said unless you are on the agenda or invited to speak, you are not to speak, so that's why a lot of people who might be interested in coming are not coming because we were, it was, at least me indicated that you were not supposed to be talking, you're not on the agenda.
Unless you're addressed.
But I'll say at meetings that even when Kelly was here, um, when it was a non-staff member anyway, um, was here, he he would talk and ask questions.
Well, that veteran was here several times.
Yeah, and it.
A lot of them.
Yeah, and and there was no issues with that.
You gotta be careful, because if you if you drag it out too long, you'll be here till midnight.
Yeah, right, and I think you put a, you put a time limit on it and that kind of thing.
Can't have them interjecting on everything that's going on.
Absolutely.
You know, so it's, you gotta be careful, and that's something you can talk about at your retreat. That that'd be a great place to discuss that, what you wanna do.
You know, harder we ought to put it on the next agenda.
Well, I don't know if you wanna, I think you wanna, I think you wanna think it through and and come up with a plan.
Some rules to get around it.
Yep, because you you can turn this into chaos really fast.
Yeah, absolutely.
But people should not feel like they can't come here.
Yeah, and what I'm telling you is that I've got test, we just heard testimony that we have some of that, and I'm just saying, we should, we should, and we shouldn't, you're correct. We should, but we should address it.
Right, I would, I would put that as one of your discussion points at your at your retreat or something.
Are you looking to then suggest that we look for a retreat, or should we look at a workshop session?
I think you call it whatever you want, it's the same outcome, I mean.
Well, I guess, to me, the difference is retreat, we're talking about a significant amount of time for a day or two, where a workshop's an hour before each meeting or a couple hours.
I think a workshop you can hammer out in two days, too, when they call it a workshop or a retreat, I don't think it really matters, the the point of it is trying to get some stuff done.
Well, I guess what I'm suggesting is, do we wanna talk about what we do, set a time, whether it be for a day, for a couple of evenings, or that, to go through some of this stuff? Or or do we wanna work it into our regular meetings? I mean, I get it, and trust me, busyness is difficult.
I I like the idea of a separate retreat, yeah.
Yep, and is it something that you you hire a leader, a retreat leader for that, or do you do it just self?
You do it yourself.
Do it yourself.
Yeah, you, or a president would lead it, just like any other board meeting, but it's not, you don't make motions. You just have, you still have an agenda, you have discussion.
Yeah, you'd wanna come up with an outline.
Right, you would have some structure to your meeting and what you're gonna, somewhat of an idea why you're gonna get together. Like I said, we had them up at the Abbey.
I think last time I was at one, it was at Messers Bead Creek Cabin. Had it down there one year. You were there?
Get off site. Well, we get it, technically, it still needs to be open.
Right, you publish it, you publish it, and you wanna, you don't wanna go someplace where it can't come, right, you know?
Right, you publish it, yeah. No.
But, yeah, you you don't, you take it out of the school, too, it's kinda nice to get out of the school set, yeah.
Yep, well, it's a, it's a project we can look into.
Yep.
Super good, plenty of time for that. So Hawaii is out.
Yeah, Hawaii.
Well.
Any more on that topic?
If you go next year, I'm for sure I'll.
Okay, exit interviews, discussion.
Yeah, I put that on, um, I just kinda wanted to talk about it, I know there's a lot of different, you know, employers, businesses, companies, whatever, that do exit interviews. I feel like it would be good information to have, you know, why are you leaving? Is there anything that, you know, um, if your brother, daughter, uncle, brother were to take your position, what would you change for them that wouldn't be as difficult, or would be, you know, whatever? Um, figure out however you wanna do it, but, um, I think it's a an important practice, um, to better yourself, help with retention, that kind of stuff. And I know that, um, then they feel hurt too. You know, if there are grievances or issues or whatever, then they felt hurting. Cause I wanna know why people are leaving. To me, it's important, um, and if it's something that, whether it's we did wrong as a board, or Russ, or Misty, or whoever, so if somebody did something wrong, I wanna know why, or and what that was. So I think it's important to to do things like that, um, for retention, growth. You know, maybe there's things that'll change, and maybe somebody's just mad and let them air it out, it doesn't matter. But I think I think that that is an important thing that we should start doing. And if somebody doesn't wanna do it, can't make them do it, but if they feel like it's something they wanna do, then I think we should ask them if they'd like to.
We've done it in this building for exit interviews for four years, but not from last year. Cause that was something that Kelly did here, so there's a file somewhere with all the exit interviews.
Did you share them with the board?
Um, John, do you remember?
No.
Oh, I guess not.
I didn't even know they happened.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, who did the interviews?
Well, that's the other thing, too, I think, you know.
Usually, it's the business manager.
Yeah, and.
Oh, here it was a superintendent, principal, or another teacher.
Talk about intimidating.
Yeah, so.
They actually really, honestly, they actually really enjoyed saying like, this is what I liked about my job, this is what I would change about my job, and.
I just have, I would personally have a try, just as an example, if I left and had an issue with Russ, I'm not gonna tell him that in an exit interview.
And that's, that's where I was gonna go with that, yeah, is is, I think that, you know, maybe if we do an exit interview, it's, a person can request. Can I have a board member, can I have the superintendent, can I have the business manager, whoever? You know, have a list of people that are available for an exit interview, and maybe it's one or two, or maybe it's one, or maybe it's all of them, or whatever. Um, but give that person the opportunity to pick. So then, you know, there's a list of five people, and if one of those people you have a problem with, then pick somebody else. And if you have a list of more than a couple, then it's not narrowing it down like, obviously, they had a problem with me, you know what I mean? And somebody might be more comfortable with one person over another, you never know, I mean, they they might share more and and get the real reason out of it versus just a generic, I'm moving on for a better job, you know, come on.
And if you're gonna do it, you want the truth out of the.
Yeah, there's, there's a reason why you're leaving, I'm sure, and if you're leaving for a better job, uh, you know, advancement in your career or whatever, so be it.
Well, that will be information as well.
I mean, I'm, you, people are, you're not gonna get everybody every time, but I just think it's an important thing to have, and I think we should really consider something like that as well.
And as far as we know, that is not a current policy.
No, that is not, yeah, as far as we know. But I think that's like, I mean, should, up to administration to to do, we would need it in policy if you didn't want it to policy.
But you should come up with some sort of standard of what kind of questions, or what kind of things, just to like, give insight into how to start that discussion, so that it's consistent.
Well, I mean, just throwing out there, I've seen my company go so far as to hire a third party for an exit interview, interesting deal, but got a lot of good data out of that, even to your point of going for a better job, well, what's better? Is it pay, is it schedule, is it number of students I have to teach, is it position, is it, yeah, so, I don't, I'll just throw that one out there. That was probably, um, being involved in a lot of exit interviews, that was the one that gave the most substantive value.
Well, I think you can probably get that too, if you had a list of people and that person could.
That is a good, yeah, I'm not gonna say you wouldn't.
I think you might get a little, you might not get all of it, but you might get a little more of that.
Yeah.
A third party cost, I don't mind.
Yeah.
Now, staff retention is a tough, I I pay for data to understand staff retention for sure, so.
But I mean, at least it's a start, you know, we can see how it goes and and whatever else, if we decide to do something like that. But I just, yeah, I I feel like it's an important thing to have, information wise.
Is that possibly something we can get out of the company doing the, is it the vital company that's doing our staff retention?
Good question.
I mean, if nothing else, you know.
A template to something.
Here's, yeah, here's our template that that works good, good for exit interview, you know, tailor how you how you want, but at least you have, you know, some questions to start with, and, you know, maybe even go so far as to, okay, this is always the form we use. Okay, now let's let's log that data so that you can, you know, see a trend here, it looks like sixty percent of our people are leaving for pay.
There you go.
Um, so I have something to ask.
Yeah.
By the way, yes, we start that. More discussion on that? I think it's a good idea. R A C T C.
That last Wednesday, they're moving stuff around, and like I said, I think the arrogant tables coming here this spring.
Teachers are getting trained.
Right, they're looking at getting a welding simulator, and they question why a welding simulator? I guess because you can simulate the same things as welding, and then you don't have the sparks, you don't have the actual physical sparks, so people can kinda go in and try it. So they're they're looking at getting one of them. Stuff is being moved around, they're busy, so, things are good. Oh, I, well, I did bring up AI, and some, that, that's really gonna be something big, and I don't know if I, I guess you can't be scared of it. It's almost like when the internet came out, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of good things coming with AI. The guy from Headin' Her, he said there's a school down in Texas, he saw it in sixty minutes, and they actually are doing their math program with AI. So, and they are, schools are going rocking, but it's a private school, you know, so, a lot of, he didn't know a lot about it. Yeah, I don't think I wanna take AI, it's for our teacher. Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, next meeting, December eleventh, six P M. Okay, with that, meeting adjourned.